Good. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Township of Chatham Planning Board for June 16, 2025. Greg, is adequate notice of the meeting being given?
Yes, adequate notice of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Township of Chatham was given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act as follows. Notice in the form of a resolution setting forth the schedule of meetings for the year 2025 and January 2026 was published in the John Courier and Mars County Daily Record. Copy was filed with the municipal clerk and a copy was placed on the bulletin board in the main hallway of the municipal building.
Very well. Roll call?
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Shahadi?
Here.
Mrs. Ewald?
Here.
Mrs. Friend? Uh, Mr. Nicolopoulos?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sillinger?
Here.
Mrs. Cheng?
Here.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes, here.
We have four of them.
Great. Welcome. Welcome, Dot from far away. And, uh, okay. First order of business is a selection of secretary. Obviously, uh, we've had some shuffling of the, uh, of the seats and we have an open spot for secretary, so I would like to take, uh, nominations for someone to be secretary. We do need a secretary to sign off on documents to kind of important, but I'm not sure it's too heavy of a lift. Matt, would you like to discuss it? Tell us all what's about that position?
Signing some documents.
Signing the documents. So, uh, would anyone like to?
Push a hand up?
Nick Nicolopoulos, if he's...
It's only signing documents.
I'll second that.
There you have it.
All in favor?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Shahadi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewald?
Yes.
Mr. Nicolopoulos?
Sure, yes.
Mrs. Sillinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheng?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All in favor? We got, congratulations.
Yep.
Very well.
No, he didn't.
The next order of business tonight is a public hearing and resolution which may be adopted. Uh, it is the fourth round housing element and fair share plan. Um, there will be action taken, uh, end of the night, at the end of the evening, by the resolution of Resolution PB-25-12, a resolution Township of Chatham Planning Board adopting the township's fourth round housing element and fair share plan. Uh, I don't think we need to go into the history of fair share housing, um, but we do need to go into the, to the history of how we got to our plan here. And, um, I'm going to turn it over to our township's housing, fair share housing, turn to discuss the plan.
Okay.
So, I think, do you want me to do, give a brief intro or?
I, I have, uh, a bunch of, uh, slides that can give a, a very brief introduction and then we'll get into the fair share plan.
Okay. Since it's a public hearing, let me just swear in purpose of the record, do you swear affirming a test when you give in front of the word will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And, uh, remind the board of your name and quickly the benefit of your credentials.
Sure. My name is Kendra Leely. I am a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I was hired by the township back in, uh, late 2024, early 2025 to help put together the fair share plan, work with the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, my background is that I have, uh, approximately 30 years as a licensed planner. I have a bachelor's degree from, uh, Rutgers University Environmental Planning and, um, Design, and I have a master's degree from Rutgers University for, uh, a master's degree in city and regional planning. Um, I also hold, am a holder of what's known as the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification for planners. Um, I have been providing services to municipalities for the past, uh, thirty some odd years, uh, both as a professional planner, uh, and generally across the board for, uh, general planning work, but more specifically for affordable housing over the last fifteen years. Um, I would say half of the clients that I have, I do affordable housing for. Uh, the other, uh, um, information that probably should be mentioned is I'm, I've been, um, found as an expert, uh, both in court as well as in municipalities. Um, and I am a special, what's known as a special adjudicator, so I represent, um, I help the, uh, judges that will be reviewing other municipalities' plans to review the plans and make sure that they are in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. Um, and I represent, uh, probably half a dozen, excuse me, a dozen or more, um, right now, a dozen or more, uh, municipalities. Um, I'm one of ten that will be representing over four hundred municipalities or reviewing four hundred municipalities as we go into the fourth round, so, um, that is my quick background.
And the fourth, uh, round, uh, housing element, fair share plan that was distributed to the board was prepared? And the fourth round housing element and fair share plan that was distributed to the board was prepared by your office under your direction?
It, yes.
Can you testify as to its contents?
I will. Yes. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Board members. Um, so yes, we are here tonight to discuss the housing element and fair share plan. Uh, the housing element and fair share plan is an element of your master plan, so you as a planning board, that is your main, one of your main responsibilities is to adopt master plan elements, uh, and so the first step in this process is to, is to go through the plan and then, uh, open it up for public comment, but, uh, uh, obviously the planning board is the one, is the entity to adopt. Um, the agenda tonight, uh, will cover a couple of things. I want to do a quick overview of affordable housing, uh, talk about what your obligation is, where it came from, what the fair share plan is, that's the, that's the plan as to how you're going to satisfy that obligation, what the next steps are, and then of course, opening up for questions and comments.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Sure.
You said the planning board, I, I think you said the planning board is the body that adopts.
Correct.
Could you, could you differentiate between the planning board and the township committee, their roles?
Yep.
And, and how it plays into this, so what we're adopting and what they're adopting?
So what you're adopting is the master plan, uh, element known as the housing element and fair share plan. Um, one of the, uh, elements that, uh, is required to be able to zone is the housing element and the land use plan. You had a third round, uh, housing element fair share plan that you all adopted and, uh, the, uh, municipality then what did something called endorsed it. So the governing body endorses it. The governing body does not endure, does not adopt the plan. They, they do something called an endorsement. It's by resolution, which basically is, uh, a blessing of, of the, uh, housing element and fair share plan. That is required because you have to submit it to court. So essentially, the, while you as a planning board have the responsibility to adopt, the, there is a responsibility on the governing body's side because this is in litigation. We, the court will review this and, and, and approve it. At some point, um, the governing body is on the hook to ensure that the plan gets implemented appropriately. So the difference is you adopted as part of the municipal land use law, they endorse it as part of the Fair Housing Act. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sure, absolutely. Um, the, the, um, uh, slide that I have up on the screen is a quick overview of what goes into a housing element and fair share plan, and this is what's required by municipal land use law as well as the Fair Housing Act. Um, and, and if you read from kind of nine o'clock over to three o'clock, uh, nine o'clock, you have a housing demographic employment analysis. You receive two pieces of information or two, two documents. One is the actual housing element and fair share plan. It's about, uh, fifteen pages long. And then there's a, a little bit more voluminous appendix. Um, and in that appendix, there's a housing demographic employment analysis. Uh, I typically like to pull that out because it's a lot of census data, um, a lot of information, a lot of good information as it relates to, uh, housing demographics and employment analysis, um, to, with regards to your town. Uh, but that is a required element. All, everything that you see here on this slide is required by the municipal land use law. Uh, we also obviously talk about your fair share obligation and I'll go through that in a second. Uh, we have to consider lands that are appropriate for affordable housing. There's a section in the, in the fair share plan that talks to that. We talk about the satisfaction of your rehab obligation and what's known as your new construction obligation. Um, there is a spending plan, uh, in the appendix, and then there's all the resolutions, ordinances. By the way, any ordinances are in draft form, so these are not ordinances that have gone through first reading and you did a consistency review, uh, yet Fair Housing Act requires that it just be in draft form, um, or require, allows it to be in draft form right now before you submit it to, to the, uh, court. Before I get into the actual plan, I always like to define what affordable housing is. The Fair Housing Act defines fair housing, or excuse me, as, uh, affordable housing as eighty percent or below of median income for the region. Um, the township is in what's known as Region Two. Region Two includes Morris, Essex, Union, and Warren Counties. Uh, there are six regions in the state of New Jersey. Uh, those six regions are pretty much divvied up amongst, uh, they are divvy up amongst counties. Uh, with regards to two, twenty twenty-five income limitations, folks who can qualify for affordable housing um, are at eighty percent of the median income and the median income and in what I'm putting here in this slide is a two-person household income. Um, that was a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred dollars. That's the median income for two-person household. Eighty percent of that is eighty-six thousand for a two-person household. Low income at fifty percent of that median is fifty-four thousand and very low income is thirty-two thousand. Uh, so it just gives you a sense of a two-person household, what, what would they would be considered, when they go through income qualifications, uh, that they would be considered a, low and moderate income. On affordability perspective, meaning what can folks in that level of income afford? Uh, for a for-sale home, let's say it's a two-bedroom home, anywhere between a hundred and thirty thousand at the low income level to two hundred and thirty thousand for the moderate income level, and then for rent, uh, for very low income, uh, just about a thousand dollars a month to about two thousand dollars a month. And that's, that's a very, um, broad range, but just gives you a sense of, uh, what folks can afford and that's, and that was, that's what's considered affordable housing uh, in this particular region. It changes per region. Um, you are, the, Region Two has one, some of the higher incomes as, as it relates to the other regions in the state. Um, just so you all are aware, when people, uh, apply for affordable housing, they do have to go through a pretty stringent and it's state-regulated process of income qualification. So folks have to show that they have a job, they have to show that they don't have assets over a certain limit. Um, they go on to what's known as a waiting list. That waiting list is, as a unit becomes available, that waiting list is randomized and there's a lottery system. And so, let's assume you have a hundred people on that list, those hundred people get, uh, on a waiting list, it gets, uh, randomized at a certain period of time, and as those units become available, the person that's first on the list gets, gets to go and, and see if they want that particular unit. They will then, that, that entity that's first on the list and they choose to go for that unit, they actually have to go through a much more rigorous, uh, income qualification process. And so, um, just, it's, it's, it's a process that is, like I said, regulated by the state of New Jersey, uh, and your administrative agent who was hired in the third round, they are a consultant. They manage that process. They help make sure that, um, anybody that is going through income qualifications and they are, um, recommending certain folks that go into units that they follow that process. So, uh, the other part of it is there's an affirmative marketing process, so the, the marketing for units pretty much goes out through this particular region, doesn't mean that people from other regions can't apply for the, the, um, uh, for the units, but there is not a residency preference, just so everybody's clear that across the state, that is, that is not something that is permitted. So, uh, the, the waiting list could be made up with folks within the region, outside the region, throughout pretty much all of New Jersey, so that, that's, um, that's the affordable housing income qualification process. The reason why we're sitting here tonight is because in nineteen seventy-five, Mount Laurel, there was something called the Mount Laurel Decision, the Supreme Court um, held in nineteen seventy-five that Mount Laurel Township, which is in South Jersey, was doing something called exclusionary zoning and that, and they indicated that that was prohibited. Exclusionary zoning basically means that they've, they only provided zoning for single-family homes, that there was no other types of zoning for multifamily housing that was, uh, provided in their zoning code. They were sued. The Supreme Court found that, um, not only did, was that prohibited, but they've, it made a, what's, what a finding indicating that, uh, every municipality has a, uh, realistic opportunity. They must provide a realistic opportunity for affordable housing. That's a constitutional obligation. So, all the Mount Laurel doctrine, all of the rules and regulations, all of the law, all of the case findings, settlement agreements are based upon the fact that every municipality has to put together a housing element and fair share plan to address their obligation. Um, the, there is a, uh, they, they, they say that it's voluntary and it is, um, but there is a stick that's involved in that, in that compliance and that if you're not compliant with that, providing a realistic opportunity for affordable housing, a builder can sue the municipality to indicate that they are exclusionary in their zoning and that they would have a piece of property that they can provide for all or a portion, portion of your affordable housing obligation. So, that's the, that's the remedy. If you don't become compliant with the, uh, Fair Housing Act and the Mount Laurel Doctrine, then there's a builder's remedy lawsuit that could potentially, um, be, be had and, uh, in that particular instance, builder remedy lawsuits basically mean that they can sue for a, a larger density on their property, a higher density on their property in order to get more market rate units to subsidize the affordables that they would provide. The Fair Housing Act, uh, which was, sure.
So, existing zoning, if you're in a builder's remedy situation, uh, existing zoning could be overridden?
Correct, absolutely. So if, if you were found to not have, not comply with your Mount Laurel obligation or your, your affordable housing obligation by a judge, uh, they could find that, uh, not only potentially that site that they were coming in with, that, um, they could get a higher density, but they could potentially say, if you don't ever adopt a housing element and fair share plan, your zoning could, um, be taken away and a judge would determine what zoning can occur within the municipality. So yes, you lose potential rights of zoning.
May I?
Sure.
Do you have any examples of that happening in any towns in New Jersey?
Yeah. Um, so South Brunswick Township is one of the most notorious ones in the third round. They decided not to comply. Uh, and not only did they get sued by, uh, uh, over probably ten, um, builders, uh, there, a lot of their, until they put a, a housing element fair share plan, more bu, builders were coming in and suing them. And so not only did they lose the right to, um, zone, but they lost the right to actually review the, the site plan and subdivision application. So the planning board's responsibility was taken away and there was a court-approved, a, a court-appointed, um, master that was responsible for reviewing it and ultimately, uh, approving the many site plans that came in.
But, but even in that decision, didn't the judge say that they fought it for, for a number of reasons? And there's a lot of other sidebars in, in that conversation with that judge in that town. But that judge, even though, did claim that affordable housing should not change the nature and character of your town in the final decision.
Correct. So there, there is a section in the Mount Laurel Doctrine that talks about, um, the, the right for existing single-family neighborhoods to be protected. And so that, you know, so that means you're not going to necessarily create, um, a wholesale re, revision as of, of an, uh, existing single-family neighborhood. However, if there are vacant parcels, if there are parcels that may redevelop in the future, they would be vulnerable, for sure. Yes. So, yes, I agree. Um, with regards to the Fair Housing Act, the Fair Housing Act was adopted in nineteen eighty-five, uh, and that created the law for, uh, municipalities to abide by, you know, as far as what you could and couldn't do, how obligations uh, should have been, uh, created. They also created the, what's known as the Council on Affordable Housing. Council on Affordable Housing was the administrative entity that actually reviewed the plans back in the early years of the third round, in the second round, in the previous rounds to that. Um, however, towards the end of the third round, they could not adopt the regulations. They had been sued many times, uh, and the Supreme Court basically found in two thousand and fifteen that they were no longer, um, able, uh, and, and they could not actually do what they were supposed to do. And so they, they, um, brought all of the affordable housing actions to the, to Superior Court. Uh, so since two thousand and fifteen, all municipalities have been under what's called the Superior Court litigation, um, uh, and, and for the most part, uh, it, it occurred, and you all went through it, settlement agreements with fair share housing, uh, in order to get it, what's known as a judgment of compliance, which is an approval from the court. We are still in that mode. We, there is not an administrative body that's going to be reviewing this plan. Um, we are still in, uh, and, and that was because in, in twenty-five, sorry, March of two thousand and twenty-four, the, uh, governor signed a, an amended, uh, Fair Housing Act and that established a couple of things as we move into the fourth round. So we are ending the third round, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are starting the fourth round July first, and that will go till June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty-five. So it will be a ten-year cycle. So we are planning right now in the third round, we're at, towards the end of it, for the next ten years. So this, this plan, um, if, if improved not only by you, uh, by the governing body, but by the court, um, will cover you for the next ten years. That doesn't mean you can't change it. Um, there's definitely, uh, it would, would create, there's some challenges with changing it, but that, but essentially, this will cover you and give you immunity from builder's remedy suits, um, for the next ten years. If you...
What happens after that ten years?
There, there is a, a section in the Fair Housing Act that actually talks to the fifth round. There will be a fifth round. Um, and it goes through what the requirements are, just what we went through in the last six months or so, where new obligations will be created and municipalities will have to comply with that for the next ten years beyond that.
So in the case of South Brunswick, uh, will they not comply because of space limitations or because they just didn't, uh, win?
Uh, with, with South Brunswick is a whole host of reasons why they didn't comply for the third round. I believe they're in compliance now. I don't, I don't know if they've, if they're submitting another plan for the fourth round or what the, the process is, but they definitely lost, um, the ability to, to zone for certain parcels on builder's remedy lawsuit parcels at that time. But yeah, there will be another round, most likely, depending upon what politically happens in the state of New Jersey, but at this point, the Fair Housing Act, uh, looks to a fifth round, uh, in ten years from now.
May I ask? Is, is this? Are the, are the, this, this round and the future rounds, are they also subject to the political wind and also should the rules change? Would we then be able to go back and rescind what we've changed in our multi-density? Master, you know?
Kendra, I can answer this one. Um, the Mount, this is Jessica Almeida, I'm the Township's Affordable Housing Council. Um, I've worked in affordable housing since about twenty sixteen and I actually, if you have specific questions about South Brunswick, I was involved in that matter as well. Um, Mount Laurel, the Mount Laurel Affordable Housing Doctrine is a civil rights doctrine, which is based on the New Jersey State Constitution. It's an equality doctrine, which says that every municipality, which Kendra started with, um, by saying that every municipality has to provide an opportunity for zoning. So while the rules might change and the way that it's implemented throughout the state until the constitution is changed or Mount Laurel one through four is overturned, there will be a requirement to make sure that municipalities throughout the state provide an opportunity for zoning. That doesn't mean you have to build affordable projects. That doesn't mean you have to fund affordable projects. What it means is you have to provide a realistic opportunity. Um, the way that those rules are construed or the way that those rules are written is going to depend on the political climate, but the requirement is going, you know, that is a constitutional doctrine, if that, if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
So the, the, a couple of things that the amended Fair Housing Act did in March, uh, is up on the screen. Uh, first, it established what the affordable housing need is for the state of New Jersey. Eight, eighty thousand, um, statewide affordable housing units are what is considered to be the need. That was then broken down into regions, not equally among the regions. Um, but for Region Two, the, uh, obligation is twenty thousand, five hundred and six affordable housing units. There was then a methodology that was placed into the, um, into the Fair Housing Act, which was based upon a third round, what's known as the Mercer County Court finding, and that was a forty-day trial that went through, um, many, many experts on the, on what the appropriate methodology was to figure out how you take the need and you, and you kind of divvy it up, divvy it up amongst all the municipalities. In a nutshell, the obligation for the town and for all the other municipalities is based on three factors. One is the how, the average household income in your municipality as it relates to the overall region, household income. The, um, non-residential assessment valuation total as it relates to the overall region, so your commercial assessment values. And then finally, develop, develop, developable land, or it's called the land capacity factor, the overall developable land that you have as it relates to the overall region. Those are all separate ratios. Those ratios are pulled together, they are averaged, and then that average factor is then applied to the twenty thousand units in order to get your obligation. So that, that, the, the Fair Housing Act set up that me, net methodology. The other thing that it did is, is it did create certain laws, regulations that are a bit different from what we had dealt with in the third round. New ones, new ways to deal with bonus credits, um, new requirements, and, and I'm not going to get into all of that. Some of that is, it does, I did put it into the fair share uh, plan to give you a sense kind of bullet-wise what, what has changed. It also set up this mediation program. So as I said to you, we will be submitting this to court, but there is a program of seven judges and, and we dealt with this when we went through the obligation, um, uh, review a couple of months ago. It's a panel of seven judges that are retired. They are responsibility, their main responsibility is to receive all the housing elements and fair share fr, plans from the four, four hundred some odd municipalities that decided to participate. And, um, they will review it and they will have an adjudicator like myself. There's, I said, as I said, nine others in the state of New Jersey, and we will review those to ensure that they meet the Fair, the Fair Housing Act as well as Mount Laurel Doctrine. The mediation piece of it is if somebody objects over the next sixty days, so you submit it, there's going to be objection period. Um, the responsibility of this program is to provide mediation. So there will be a mediation, um, session. There will be a, a point where, uh, the, a, if you can't come to an agreement, that judge will make a recommendation to the, the sitting visage judge, uh, in the Superior Court. So the last round, it took many, many years to go through settlement negotiations. This, uh, imagine that process is basically taken into about sixty days. Um, maybe a little bit longer, but for the most part, it's a very, um, truncated, um, accelerated mediation process, and that's what the Fair Housing Act set up. So for your, um, affordable housing obligation, I just want to go backwards a little bit because the Fair Housing Act does require that we tend to look back to the third round and talk about status, and we'll go through that in a second. But you're, just to give you a sense of what your obligation was in the third round, uh, your, your rehabilitation, uh, need was sixty-three units, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit on that for right now. I'll talk about that in a second. But your prospective need, uh, the bigger number, three hundred and eighty-seven units, was your, what's known as your new construction obligation, and that's kind of the main obligation that we look at. Um, you will notice that the third round covered a long period of time, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and twenty-five. There's a twenty-six-year period of time. They are normally ten-year periods for the most part. Um, and so that's why the fourth round is ten years, but the third round, as I said, took so long because there was a lot of litigation, couldn't adopt rules. Rules would be adopted and then they would, we'd be sued and, and overturned. And so, um, the fourth round obligation, uh, is thirty rehab units and a hundred and forty-one is your prospective need or your new construction uh, obligation, and that was based upon the methodology and that also was based upon, um, a, uh, a ruling by the court, by the panel, that one forty-one was, was our obligation. We had, um, indicated that we did not, um, we did not agree with the DCA calculation that came from the Fair Housing Act. Uh, and so we have, our number is one forty-one. The third round affordable housing status, this is an overview and you will have a, you have a chart in your fair share plan. Um, that three hundred and eighty-seven obligation was broken down into two pieces, and that's because you are no, you are what is known as a vacant land town. You have a scarce resource. You do not have a va, enough vacant land to support that, that total three hundred and eighty-seven units. So in the third round, uh, the, the planner did a vacant land analysis and adjustment and they adjusted the number. So it's a downward adjustment to two hundred units. That's what's known as your realistic development potential, or the acronym that you'll hear me say is RDP. Um, you provided two hundred and twenty-eight units towards that RDP. And that breakdown, uh, is specific in the fair share plan, but just generally, what you'll see here is eight of those units were through what's known as a regional contribution agreement. Those no, those are no longer allowed. You were, uh, at one point in time, you were allowed to pay municipalities up to fifty percent of your obligation to take those units. Uh, you did that, uh, many, many years ago, but you were able to, to provide some of those units towards your third round. You extended controls of seventy-two units. Uh, basically what that means is that a deed restriction had been ex, expired and they are existing affordable housing units. Any affordable housing unit to be, to be rece, to receive credit has to be deed restricted for a minimum of thirty years. Those were actually, so you did this back in the prior round, um, twenty, thirty years ago, and they were coming due and you were able to extend those controls. So seventy-two units were extended, meaning you didn't have to zone for it, you didn't have to create those units. Eighty-six units are now occupied. Twelve units are going through and, and, and obtaining financing. You received fifty bonus credits and I said twenty, um, surplus credits went to the unmet need. The reason why we have to look at this in our, in housing element and fair share plan is because what the Fair Housing Act basically says is if you have any units that were not under construction or are not under construction by the time you submit your, your fourth round plan, um, you have to either say why they're still realistic or make up for them. Uh, so that's, it's a, it's an essential... Uh, so that's, it's a, it's an essential piece of looking to the fourth round is obviously looking backwards to make sure we don't have a deficit, which you do not. You have, as I said, you have a surplus that went to your unmet need. Those three hundred and eighty-seven units don't necessarily, and I said they downward adjust to two hundred. Those a hundred and eighty-seven uh, uh, units that come from that downward adjustment, it's also, it's known as the unmet need. They don't just disappear. Uh, so in the third round, you have to put what's known as mechanisms in place to address the unmet need. You may never provide a hundred and eighty-seven units of affordable housing to meet the hundred and eighty, uh, to, to meet that unmet need. However, you went through a pretty laborious um, salaminate process with Fair Share Housing, who uh, was the, the entity on the other end of the negotiations in the third round. And you did a couple of things. Um, you were able to provide twenty-three units from the RDP of surplus. You adopted what's known as a mandatory set aside ordinance. As a mandatory set aside ordinance basically says any, anywhere in the municipality, if somebody wants to build six or more, well typically five or more units of, of market rate units, they would have to provide one affordable. So let's say somebody comes to the, to the zoning board and they want to use variance, they want to build um, five units. They would have to, by, by ordinance, they are required to provide the set aside of affordable housing. It's a capture mechanism. So it's a, it's, it's to capture any um, densities that are, that you know, higher than, that would give a higher than five units. Um, you also adopted what's known as development fee ordinance and that is uh, the ability to collect fees on residential and non-residential new builds. Uh, one, one and a half percent of the assessed value for residential, two and a half percent of the assessed value of non-residential new development. That money goes into an affordable housing trust fund. You then have the ability to use that money to help support affordable housing. So that's a fund that has been created. Um, that fund actually is the mechanism that I utilize to put a spending plan together. So we know, we know how much money you have now. We know how much money potentially is coming in the future. We, we give some estimates and we, and we indicate how that money shall be spent uh, over the next ten years of some of it, of which will be going towards actual affordable housing construction. You also adopted an overlay district, uh, the Fairmont Common, which is an office building at four sixty-six Southern Boulevard at twelve units an acre. That's about a three point four acre parcel. So these were all of your unmet need mechanisms that that you settled with fair share housing. They agreed with it. A judge agreed with it and said you are now, this is how you was, this is how you have addressed and satisfied your third round uh, requirements. I, there are no, in my opinion, and I put it in the plan, there are no deficits that we have to deal with as we go into the fourth round.
Can I just, is it five units? So is it five?
Five.
Or is it six?
It's five.
Cross over six.
It's five. It's five or more.
It's five.
Five, thank you.
Yep. Your fourth round obligation, as I indicated to you, uh, is made up of two pieces. Um, one is the perspective need, which is a hundred and forty-one units. That's also known as the new construction need. And then one is the rehab need. Uh, you had a large rehab need in the third round, which was sixty-three units. That was actually um, adjusted down to six units in the third round. Rehab is basically based upon census data. So it, it looks at data from the census and it says uh, based upon this data, we believe through, through a, a, a certain uh, methodology that there are, let's talk about the, the third round, sixty-three units of, that require um, housing that that may have low and moderate income housing folks live there. That doesn't mean that's deed restricted, but they may be lower, lower in moderate income. And one uh, unit, one, one, uh, like uh, electrical or roofing or structural or uh, something about that house is in poor condition. It needs to be rehabilitated. You put together a program and you have a program that allows the municipality to provide a, a minimum of ten thousand dollars to upgrade that unit. That particular house that receives that money has a lien on that house for ten years. Um, and so that, that, the folks that live in that house also have to income qualify to make sure they meet those, the, the moderate to low income uh, income limitations. But the way that you receive credit for it is that you provide that money. If you don't, uh, if you don't upgrade sixty-three units, you don't get penalized for it. As long as you put the program in place, you allow for money to be provided and you can run that through the county as well. The county has a rehab program as well. You get credit for it. It was adjusted down to sixteen units in this round. So um, the rehab obligation isn't cumulative. Uh, it is recalculated each, each ten-year cycle. It's based upon census data. So while it was sixty-three units in the third round, it's thirty units. It actually went down a bit in the fourth round. We had a, what's known as a structural condition survey done by your, your um, construction official where they go out, they go through the municipality, through a win, what's known as a windshield survey to see how many actual units they believe are in poor condition. They don't have to check income qual, qualifications or anything like that. But uh, the, the rules allow for it to be adjusted if they do not find thirty units. They found sixteen units and so we are, are adjusting our rehab obligation to sixteen units.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So is the sixty-three from ninety-nine to fifteen? Cause I feel like in fifteen that we got some crazy number and it got knocked down to eight.
Yes, it got down to six, actually.
Six.
Yeah. Yeah. So it was actually based on, at that point, it was twenty fifteen. It wa, it would have been um, the two thousand and ten census data is what it was based upon.
Okay. So I, so how do you go from six to sixteen, which is a good number? Not complaining that, but in terms of, you know, when you think about uh, what has gone on in Chatham Township and the buildings that uh, residents that need rehab. Um, I find it odd that the number's gone up and not down.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, what the structural condition survey looked like in the third round. Um, but your construction official went by the requirements of the, the regs and rule, the rules and regulations of the second round rules and they were able to um, determine that sixteen, there were actually sixteen units.
And again, I just want to clarify, um, I think what you said was that can apply to any home.
Correct.
So I could be retired.
Yep.
Let's say retired for many years and may not have the income once had. The house has tripled in price. Uh, but it's a million dollar home. Doesn't matter if the township could apply. This person needs rehab on their roof or whatever it is.
As long as you meet the income uh, limitations, correct? As long as you're low and moderate income. Correct. Yes, absolutely. And, and it would, it, it, it's not so unusual that it would actually go up because as housing gets older, um, those, those systems, they may break down over time. So um, I would imagine that ten, it tends to actually go up with the actual survey piece of it potentially could go up because, yeah, over ten years, things happen.
So it's going to be hard actually than in terms of a senior citizen. If, if you're on social security.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you, you probably qualify. You could qualify. I'm trying, I'm trying to think where the income limits would take us out of that range of just helping a senior citizen, say. Uh, as opposed to, I think one of the, uh, if you're applying it right back into an affordable housing complex.
Yes.
There, then there's no, really, you can spend it all there.
Correct.
Add it.
Yep.
But if you wanted to really help an individual in town that needs it, it's a little bit more cumbersome.
It's, it's cumbersome. I mean, it's the, the, the two pieces are one that if they meet the income, the second is the lien. So the lien gets placed on the house for ten years. If, as long as they let, you live in that house for ten years, the lien, it's, it's basically free money at that point. If they choose to.
Is that a pride thing? Is, is there a pride element in this? Like, do we approach the house or does the resident?
No, the resident comes, the, the resident comes too. Yeah.
It's a program the resident might not be aware of.
And it, and I will say the success of a rehab program is about marketing, you know, ensuring that um, you know, people in the seniors community know that this isn't available to them. Uh, so yes, it is, it is a bit of a, there's a, there's a lull as far as uh, marketing is concerned. Sometimes they just, the word just doesn't get out.
Sure. Okay.
What is, what is the AMI percentage that qualifies for that rehab program?
The, the low and moderate income uh, limitations that, that are in the, in the uh, fair share.
What percent of AMI?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
Yep, eighty percent and below. Correct. Yep.
And this is Jessica again, um, on those projects that are a part of the rehabilitation program, we can work, I know Kendra has probably done this as well. We can work to make um, the applications anonymous, where there would, you know, there'd be no stigma, there'd be no one um, other than the committee who would be reviewing the applications would know who would be receiving the funds. And I've done that in other municipalities.
That was sort of my question, the uh, income qualification review process for these in connection with the re, rehab units would not be done by the state licensed entity. It would be done by.
Your, your administrative agent.
Mm-hmm.
That's who, that's who runs the rehab program, the municipal sponsored rehab program. So they would, they would ensure, just like they would um, review a person coming in for a new unit, it would be the same situation. They would, it, the only thing that's not part of it is the affirmative marketing. Cause the folks already obviously live in that particular unit. And so they just have to income qualify and um, provide that information.
Right.
I, I thought that there was a, Morris County has an.
Morris County does as well, yes. Yep, they have the county program. Um, so I'm not sure what, what their process is as far as if they use an administrative agent or if they use an actual um, a person with, on staff to, to review it. I'm not.
We can leverage that for, we can.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So let's say somebody needs fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements of their house. Um, you know, those major systems that might be failing, you can provide a, a, a minimum of ten thousand and then they provide whatever they are able to provide. But yes, you definitely can leverage the county program.
Oh. Now, just, and this, just the last point on that is somebody who now qualifies in a situation that Kevin was talking about gives the money. Do they have to make that ten-year commitment or could they get the money? Re, rehab the house, put it on the market and then pay off the lien and that's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, the, the lien would be paid off as part of the proceed.
As part of the sale price of the house, but of course the house becomes saleable once it's fixed up.
For sure. The lien had lifted. Yeah, you pay, I mean, it's just a, it's a payoff of the.
There's no penalty except for you paying back the money, you know, and you may have been a senior who, you know, couldn't afford to do it and then you can realize whatever the, the, you know, value is in the home and pay it back.
Yeah.
Okay. And my, my other question is, you talked about the, the, you know, obviously the amount of units are um, calculated based on census.
The rehab.
So every time we put in more multi-unit housing to fulfill our obligation, our numbers of the amount of folks here in Chatham Township goes up. Okay. So every time that goes up, then it will potentially be an increase in how many more affordable house units we're going to do because our region is going to continue to grow by twenty thousand. So it, it becomes, in my view, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. And a continual increase, a continual increase, a continual increase, more multi-unit, more multi-unit, more multi-unit in somewhat rural areas. Is that correct?
Well, so it's actually, it's, it's based, well, if you look at the third, if you look at two thousand and ten data versus twenty twenty census data, it actually went down. Um, so it, I don't know if it, I don't know if there's a full tract. It doesn't follow that tract completely. It's really about the ages of the units. So as units get to be thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years old, there's a, a potential that more of the major systems are starting to fail. So it's actually, it, it, it's based upon census data, but it's based upon the housing information that they receive from the census data. How, how, how old's the house? They ask questions like, do you have, um, is it, is there an overcrowding situation? Do you have working plumbing? Do you have a kitchen facility? Do you have bathrooms? Those are all that goes into um, talking about deficit units. So I mean, but essentially if you, if you add more units over the next forty years, potentially you may have a rehab number that might be a bit higher. I don't know if the next census or even next twen- twenty years is going to create that much more.
Right, but it.
The rehab number.
It just stands to reason, when you have a township like our own, which we've determined that we're at a loss for vacant land to put these things. So that we have to continually um, re-zone for a multi-unit and the census keeps going up and we need to have to, to, to do it, you know, and then and you just even mentioned overcrowding, uh, we're, we're going to be continually creating it, not only in Chatham Township, but ti- towns that are alike.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, the, the rehab is, is there, again, if, if people want to take advantage of it, they can. You don't get penalized if they don't. So.
But, but that being said, the fourth round obligations are lower than the third.
Correct. Yes.
So.
That's what I mean. It doesn't necessarily track completely with that thought process. Um, so your fourth, so that's the rehab obligation. Your perspective need is one forty-one. Um, the next slide talks about how the one forty-one is downward adjusted. So again, you, you continue to be a vacant land. Let's go ahead. I'm sorry.
Greg, did we lose uh, Jess?
No, she's just, when she turns off her video, it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm still here.
All right, very good.
So we talked about a downward adjustment for the third round, uh, because you're a vacant land town. Uh, you haven't, you haven't necessarily changed, right? You're continuing to be, have a scarce resource. You don't have enough vacant land to provide a hundred and forty-one affordable housing units. And so we take advantage of that vacant land adjustment, that analysis. And we downward adjusted based upon that uh, review, the RDP or realistic development potential is four. I like to look at relative, realistic development potential as the real units you have to create. So um, as a vacant land town, while you don't have to do zoning for a hundred and forty-one units, you are able to downward adjust, but one of the requirements of the downward adjustment is that that smaller lumber, you actually have to create, that help to create those units. And so um, those are real units that in the next couple of years, and we'll talk about what that is, that you as municipality have to put together a plan to, to show that those will be, will be built. The remainder of that one hundred and thirty-seven units is also known as the unmet need. Again, I'm going to say to you is that while you can't meet the overall obligation, you still have to put in mechanisms to go towards the unmet need. You may never get to a hundred and thirty-seven units. Um, but the actual, the Fair Housing Act has a very specific metric, which we'll talk about as to how you satisfy the unmet need now. So your fair share plan um, summary is here and we're going to go through each individual one in a second. But essentially the satisfaction of your obligation is two-part. One is the RDP of four units. There is a three-unit um, sing, uh, what will look like most likely a single family home to go on a, the old skateboard, skateboard park area, um, municipal, the municipality owns that property. It's known as a hundred percent affordable housing municipally sponsored project. That means the town is providing the space, meaning the land. Um, in order for a nonprofit developer, in this particular instance, um, looking at somebody that's already been developing in the municipality, uh, they have agreed to help provide this, what's known as an infill small unit of three affordable housing units. Um, and I will say it's, it's a minimum of, of three affordable housing units that they will be providing theirs. And you get a bonus credit for that. You get a bonus credit for one unit and that's because it is a hundred percent affordable housing project. The Fair Housing Act allow, and this is, this has changed from the third round. They allow for full bonus credits for uh, units of affordable, a hundred percent affordable housing, meaning all units in this structure will be affordable to low and moderate income households. Um, and just think of it this way, you can do it this way or you can provide inclusionary zoning. In order to do, do inclusionary zoning to, to meet three affordable housing units, you would have to provide fifteen total units in order for the twelve units of market rate to subsidize the three. So the benefits of a hundred percent is that you limit the amount of total units. Um, one of the challenges is that the town has to have land in order to, to provide. And then they also typically have to provide some gap funding uh, for the affordable housing uh, development. Um, the unmet need is being taken care of through an over, a proposed overlay zone uh, on the B one and P, PI two districts. And we'll talk about that in a second. So your four-unit RDP satisfaction, uh, this is the municipally sponsored hundred percent project. Uh, as I said, it's located on Southern Boulevards, the vacant skateboard park uh, near the police station and the um, there is an existing affordable housing project um, to the, to the right of what is on your screen. Uh, again, minimum of thir- three family units, uh, and these will be rental units um, in this. And you will most likely have a combination of most likely a one, a two and a three bedroom in there to meet the required bedroom distribution. A nonprofit developer will be, will go through partnership with a nonprofit developer to, to actually find the financing and build the unit and then manage those units as well. So the municipality's uh, kind of skin in the game is the, is the land as well as potential gap financing. In this, in this instance, um, somebody that does these very small infill projects, there's not a whole lot of developers that do this. Um, money typically comes from the Department of Community Affairs. They have an affordable housing trust fund. They will most likely go after that funding for this as well as conventional funding. County has some funding and again, the town has um, some funding through their trust fund to be able to help any gap that, that they would occur.
Why can't we only fit three units on that piece of property as opposed to the one that's to the right of it? Where it's got multiple units.
So the one that you see in red um, does have some wetland constraints to it. Uh, and, and uh, the engineer is aware of it. DEP, we know DEP is aware of that. Um, and so pretty much where the development would occur is, is on the existing impervious cover. DEP, we know DEP is aware of that. Um, and so pretty much where the development would occur is is on the existing impervious cover. Um, but but there's a potential that, um, you could maybe get a a couple more units in there. The right now, they're looking at what's, a couple of things that has to happen is when you receive financing from a state, the state wants to maximize the efficiency of the dollars going out the door. So if you're doing three units, um, and it costs a hundred thousand dollars per unit, but you could do five units and cost fifty thousand dollars per unit, the 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 state wants to look at things that are going to be obviously most cost efficient. So what I've been told right now, it's a minimum of three family units. It may change in the future depending upon the fin- the funding and and what a state is is going to be putting towards the the overall project. The other thing that we have to do when we do a fair share plan is we have to show that it's available, suitable, developable and approvable. That's that's a requirement, um, per our, uh, affordable housing reg- regulations. And so that you'll see that suitability analysis, which is what I call it, in the fair housing, uh, I'm sorry, in the fair share plan. Available basically means there's no de restrictions that would limit affordable housing to be had on the property. Suitable basically means that it's compatible uses around it as well as having access to an appropriate road. Developable means it can be developed in accordance with all regulations. So we have a draft zoning ordinance in the appendix that would allow for this to occur on this property. Um, then they would also have to follow county, um, uh, county reg- regulations as well as state regulations. And then approvable basically means, again, that, um, you will provide for the necessary zoning, uh, for the property. Any questions on the proposed RDP mechanism?
Just one. And it it's more of an overall. Uh, I don't want to go into the history of that particular piece of property, but is it common practice for the state to relax their regulations, in particular the DEP, in order to um, satisfy affordable housing, but not to relax those very same regulations for just of the run-of-mill, uh, resident?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, the regulations are the regulations. They they do not relax necessary regulations for affordable housing. They still, you know, we still, if there's wetlands, wetlands buffers, you still have to either apply for a general permit or apply for an indivi- individual permit. In this particular instance, my understanding is it's an individual permit that needs to be applied for and we're aware of that. Um, but but that doesn't mean that, uh, you get a you get a pass because it's affordable housing.
It it's my understanding that we were told at one other time, and Mr. Chairman, maybe you can refresh my memory or confirm it that, um, because of the wetlands on that particular piece of property, when we, when we built the one affordable housing, you know, the Arbor Green, I guess it is.
Yeah.
Um, next door that, uh, we couldn't.
Yeah, I.
Worked there.
John and I have talked through this and he's pretty confident that in conversations with DEP, one of the things that they are recognizing is the existing impervious coverage and that the ability to build on that is is available to.
Well, that was there before, so therefore.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure.
Yeah, you understand where I'm coming from. Are they relaxing the regulations?
Yeah.
Because nothing's really changed there except the skateboard ramps are gone.
Yeah, I I as far as generally what I'm talking about is, my understanding, DEP does not relax regulations just because of its affordable housing. So, um, we are moving forward with this particular project because, because Jo- I don't think John's on the line tonight, but, um, that he has had conversations with DEP since Arbor Green has gone in and apparently we're able to build on a certain piece.
Yeah, I'm I'm aware of that, but it certainly gives the appearance that the DEP is changing the ra- you know, changing the rules in order to do the affordable housing obligations, but but discriminating against, you know, just a regular resident.
I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Thank you.
I was just going to add one more history to it. Yeah, originally the plan was for two twelve unit buildings. And and, uh, on the site, because the site was one one affordable housing site. And now it's broken down. Obviously, uh, we took, we took that land back, right? So, so it was originally going to be two twelve unit buildings that got pushed into one. And part of the problem was that the DEP, um, you know, they went from a fifty to a hundred and fifty foot setback. So I don't know if we're still at a hundred and fifty foot setback or not, or or I suppose we are. Uh, but the timing would have taken two years. The ironic part of that is it took us over two years anyway to build, to get it started to be built.
As I was paying attention, I remember attending that planning board meeting, uh, on the site. I was not on the committee at the time. The the hundred and fifty foot buffer was there. We were aware of that when the two buildings were put in the twelve units. It was because one of the buildings was bumping up against the police station. So that's why it had to be redesigned because that two-building approach was always more desirable. Uh, so the revised design consolidated into one building, but it was, I was always told that that the reason the, uh, skateboard, uh, site was preserved was because the understanding was it could be built there, even with the buffer. Now, there's not a lot of room to build, but that was for the last six years. I was always operating under that assumption.
The timing was if this were adopted, the plan for the fourth round, does this be delivered sometime within the ten-year period or is there earlier?
It's an earlier, um, deadline. So for a hundred percent projects, it's, uh, typically construction should start within two years of your judgment of compliance, which is your approval from the court. Um, I would suspect if if everything goes according to the required schedule, um, you probably get a judgment of compliance sometime early twenty twenty-six. So it would be by twenty twenty-eight that you would hopefully have a shovel in the ground.
I mean, I I don't know, just from a board perspective. I I don't know where the layout will be for those three units or how it will fit into the acreage there. But just from a humanitarian standpoint, you know, there's a bunch of kids in that twenty-four unit building now. There'll probably be more. Um, they're already playing out on the skate park. Now you add three more in there. If I was on the township committee and I'm a kid, I'd be a little concerned because I know where my playground would be if I lived there. And it's going to be in the DPW parking lot because a lot of things to play with there. So, so I I just feel like if we do this and if this board passes this, uh, that some element should be taken into effect that provides enough open space for 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 kids to have someplace to play on that present skate park area, if you will. So, just my two cents.
Well, it it seems to me that we're going, I know, I know we haven't gotten there yet, but we're going to go to the next part of where we're, we're going with the the multi-unit. Not that, uh, I'm saying that I'm particularly in favor or not in favor, but wouldn't it make more sense to squeak those three units and and the and the other proposed?
So the the, again, the difference between when you have an RDP and an unmet need, there's, there's a different, uh, standard. The RDP are units you have to build. You can't just zone.
Okay, that's where my misunderstanding was.
Yeah, so the unmet need is a zoning mechanism. The RDP is like a, just think of it, construction. You are going to create those units.
Correct.
So one of the things that the Affordable Housing Committee looked at was, um, we need, you know, to to either have a parcel that the municipality owns, because that's usually the easiest way. You already own it. You can, you can donate it or you have to then purchase something and, um, in order to then provide for that space for those three units. Um, in this particular instance, we thought this was, this is really the only site the town owns. Um, and so the, you know, being able to find another site that is not extremely expensive and that's vacant um, was difficult. And and we don't, I think the other part of this is our timeframe is limited. Like we, you know, we basically had a couple of months to figure this out. We didn't have a whole lot of time to put an option on a, another piece of property.
So to that point though, if if this gets adopted with this plan as is and something comes along in the next six months, twelve months, whatever, before you really get going on this, where the town can purchase something and replace it, can you apply to sort of solve that out?
Yeah, I mean, it, so it, um, there's going to be some, um, uh, hurdles to do that. It's not like you can just adopt a new plan and be, you know, say, here's our new plan. It would, if if anybody objects and you have to file a settlement agreement, you'd have to check with that person that you're settling with, most likely fair share. You'd have to go back to court and get, and you'd have to go back through and get an approval. I mean, it takes time, but yes, it's, it, you know, your master plan elements were always meant to potentially change. I mean, you can't, you can't necessarily see, foresee the future in the next ten years and what's going to happen or what's not going to happen. So, yes, you can change it. You are not absolutely stuck with if another piece of property comes along and it makes more sense. Um, and you're, you haven't moved too far on this. I mean, that's the other part of it is that you are going to be, you know, making progress on on building on this parcel probably sometime towards the end of twenty twenty-six.
Does the state or the council, uh, prior to picking out spots, uh, do they, does anyone take into account like, uh, sewage and utilities or is that pre- pre-construction?
That's part of the, um, suitability analysis, that you has to be in sewer service, it has to have capacity, um, has lines within, you know, a location that we can tap into. So yes, that's part of it.
So is that on us or is that on?
Well, on a, on a hundred percent job, it would be a combination, you know, we would probably forgive any kind of connection fees, that type of thing. But for, let's say, an inclusionary developer, that's totally on them. They would have to figure out ways to get sewer to their property and they have to pay for the capacity, just like any other developer would. But with a hundred percent, it's a little bit different. Those are the, those are the, that's why it's called municipally sponsored, because there's a bit of a, a give and take with municipality really supporting the the project. I'm going to move on and and we can circle back if there are additional questions. So with the unmet need, which is that little bit of a larger number, the Fair Housing Act is treating unmet need a little bit different than when, what you all treated it in the third round. They have a statement in the Fair Housing Act that basically says that you as a municipality are to identify parcels that are likely to redevelop in the next ten years and adopt realistic zoning that would satisfy the requirement. And what is the requirement? It's twenty-five percent of the unmet need. So while your unmet need is a hundred and thirty-seven units, um, what the Fair Housing Act says is what, we know that you may not ever be able to get to a hundred and thirty-seven, but we think twenty-five percent of that is fair. We think that you should zone for twenty-five percent of that. I have no idea where that number came from. I don't know who wrote that in. The the nice thing about it is that we are not just chasing a number. In the third round, what I found with a lot of the, my municipal clients is that, um, we were just trying to satisfy fair share housing in our negotiations. Is this good enough to meet the unmet need? Do we have to add another one? Now we have a metric. It's twenty-five percent of the unmet need, which is thirty-five affordable housing units. The, the challenge with the Fair Housing Act language is that this is brand new. We, this has not been tested. We don't know exactly how a court is going to look at this. Um, so as, as planners in the state of New Jersey, we looked at this and, uh, some of the things that, um, are, I think, uh, realistic and reasonable to think about when we talk about identifying parcels is, is one is that they are larger parcels. And the reason why I say that is that when you have larger parcels owned by one particular entity um, versus twenty owned by twenty different people, the likelihood of a one large parcel being developed is much more likely than twenty, that somebody would have to cobble together and put contracts of sale on. So we looked at larger parcels as kind of the first review. Second, the other thing that you potentially look at is lower improvement to land value ratios. So when you have a building that is worth less or right about what your land value is, it could signal that that particular building is old and tired and it, you know, somebody would maybe want to redevelop that parcel. So we looked at the improvement to land value ratios. For the most part, most of your buildings are, I would say, uh, at level, meaning you don't have a lot of dilapidated buildings, you don't have things that are old and tired. Um, the other thing that we look at are uses that are experiencing or could be expected to experience vacancies. So think about banks, think about churches, um, some retail stores that have kind of gone from brick and mortar and they've, they've moved out, re, you know, and and it could be definitely offices, um, real estate offices, you know, things that you don't necessarily need brick and mortar spaces for. So we looked at that as well. Nonconforming uses are another i- item that potentially could be redeveloped. In this particular instance, I mean, nonconforming as it relates to your zoning. So if you have buildings that have been around for a very long time, they don't meet the zoning requirements. If they want to improve it, add to it, they have to come to the zoning board to get a variance or use variance to do that. Sometimes people are less likely to do that. They don't want to spend the time and money to redevelop. And so nonconforming uses maybe also, uh, I, parcels that are likely to redevelop. Again, this is not tested. This is something that as a group of planners throughout the state of New Jersey, we kind of start to think about where, where is it likely to redevelop and we we will see how the court looks at it. But that being said, we looked at, uh, particular areas in town. Um, and, uh, we looked at, and I know that we talked to the, about this with the, um, with the planning board a month or so ago, uh, but the draft overlay zone is, again, it's a, it's a zoning ordinance that's in draft form. It's called the B, it's, it's the Business Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. Um, this is over the B one and portions of PI two, um, zoning districts. Uh, we know that there are some retails, big retail shopping center in there, um, banks, offices, a gas station, a church. Um, certainly things, these are larger parcels. They tend to be a bit larger parcels. They are in an area within the municipality that is already somewhat intensely developed. Um, it is a good crossroads of, uh, existing development that is occurring here. Uh, we are proposing ten units per acre in order to meet, I'm going to just back up for a second, in order to meet the the thirty-four affordable housing units. One thing that you have to recognize is that we can't just zone for affordable housing, thirty-four affordable housing units. You must zone as an, it's an inclusionary district. So you multiply thirty-four times five. You have to zone for a hundred and seventy units in order to have a set aside at twenty percent of thirty-four units.
Sorry, one clarifying question. Up above, it says one thirty-seven times point zero five, thirty-five units, but then it says thirty-four below.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it should be thirty-five. It's thirty-five. That's in the plan. We have thirty-five units because it was, yeah, it was a rounding up, no error. So I had thirty-four, it's like thirty-four point seven, and so it has to be rounded up to thirty-five. That's a, that's a mis-type on my slide. Um, so yeah, so you have to provide for inclusionary zoning that takes care of the total units. So this particular area is approximately seventeen acres. Um, at twen- ten units an acre, you get to the hundred and seventy units. Um, the proposed zoning ordinance allows for mixed-use housing. Uh, so, so what that basically means is you are permitting retail to con- to continue to occur on the first floor and the second floor, possibly a third floor of of residential housing. The thing I want to stress is that it's an overlay di- zone. It's an overlay zoning district, meaning that the underlying districts stay the same. If I am the, a retail, uh, owner of property here and I don't want to move and I don't want to change, if I want to even expand, I can continue to do that under the existing zoning. Nothing about the proposed overlay zone requires me to change. So it does, it it it's basically overlay zoning gives you an option to change if you want to. It gives you a potential incentive to change if you want to, to allow for mixed-use housing, uh, excuse me, mixed-use with housing above. Um, so that's, that's what an overlay district is. There are proposed bulk and and design standards. There are regulations as it relates to setbacks and and still has to meet all the parking requirements, still has to meet all of your other design requirements as it relates to what's in your ordinance currently. Um, but it's a ca- it's what's known as a capture mech- mechanism. It's, it's capturing potential affordable housing if parcels redevelop in the next ten years.
So, so I just want to make sure I understand that completely. So to use an example, if, um, if Ace Hardware, um, sells, but somebody wants to come in and go up two stories and, but a hundred percent retail, that's okay. They're changing, they're, they're staying within the existing zoning. There's no requirement that says, no, if you're going to change.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, they still have their rights under their existing zoning.
Yep, right.
I have a question.
Sure.
It's all in one place. There were no other parcels of land in the township that could have been included in the, uh, overlay zone in order to maybe relieve some of this area from taking on the entire burden.
So we, we looked at a couple of things and I know that we had this conversation at the planning board, the last meeting, but I know that there were some options that they were looking at other mid, other properties. Um, and as the Affordable Housing Committee went back and looked at some of those properties, I think for envi- for, for a couple of reasons, there were some environmental constraints on a couple of them that that reduced the lot area. So as you reduce lot area, reduce the amount of units that you can get on those lots. I think the other part about this was as it, as it relates to sound planning, good planning, having it all in one particular area makes more sense because the roadway can can handle it. But you also have then, um, a inability to provide for, um, a good character of the area. You already have a somewhat, I'm not going to call it a downtown, but you have a node of development here. And being able to create a new neighborhood in one particular area, um, allowing for folks to walk to retail, walk to potential new parks that are being built. Um, those are all taking advantage of the existing infrastructure, taking advantage of the existing roadway network. Um, those are all things that would support a healthy neighborhood or a healthy community. And so that, so when the Affordable Housing Committee looked at some of the other suggestions from the other, um, planning board meeting, uh, we went back to this and said, this prob- we went back to this and said, this probably makes, and I think the planning board, majority of you said that this makes more sense to have it in one particular area. So as a, I think as a majority, this, this was thought of as a better plan.
Well, I think a couple of things. As a lifelong resident of that area, we've seen probably eighty percent of all the high density put out there on us, you know, as far away as possible. All the folk, you know, we're a more blue collar area, you know, it's definitely appears that it's being put as far away as possible from, let's say, some of the more affluent areas in town. We've already seen a change where, I'm not gonna get into details where we, you know, we have people hanging around. Okay, let's say, you know, where the, where the affordable housing is there. So, you know, some, some of those things you're saying isn't true. And I wonder, you know, I think our former mayor, Mr. Kelly is in, is in the audience. And maybe he can speak to this or speak to it when we have the public portion. But this, this particular parcel of land was considered, you know, what was it, ten years ago, whatever it was, to be used for affordable housing, town owned. Uh, now it's not, and I know that the last time you said, well, it's not close to this or not close to, to that. Well, it's just, it's perfectly close to New Providence. You know, just as the other side of town is perfectly close to Madison. So I wonder why that burden for the township hasn't been shared throughout the entire township. I think it's, it's somewhat discriminatory to put it all, you know, we have Chatham Hill Apartments, we have Sterling Properties. We now have, I forget the name over there that we just built on the former Charlie Brown site. And, and one of the other things I've noticed is we've had issues, this board had issues, Mr. Chairman, with some of the affordable housing from other towns being placed right on the border of our township. You know, and, and I, I kind of look at some of that. We've made, we've made some pretty strong arguments about that. But yet we see no problem in doing that to our neighbors.
So I, I guess two things, my response, one would be on the township building. Again, the new piece of legislation that basically says we, it has to be likely to redevelop. The township building is not likely to redevelop in the next ten years, from my understanding. Otherwise, they, they're not, they're not planning on going anywhere at this point. So I couldn't meet that standard of likely to redevelop. The second part of, of your comments as it relates to putting them all in one spot. Again, this, all of them is market rate housing as well. And, and so it's, it's market rate and then twenty percent affordable. So this is not necessarily creating a negative. And these are new neighbors, new community members, creating new areas of developments that will create places for people to live. So it's not, you know, I, I, I don't think that it makes sense to say that you're putting them all in one area. I think these are, these are gonna be future residents, whether they're affordable housing or market rate housing. And you're creating new, new spaces for people to live.
You're talking to a generational resident who remembers when none of that was there. It was greenhouses and, and Smiths floors. So, you, you know, there's, yeah, it's all been put down that end of town. With the exception of basically Cardinal Hill Apartments over on this side of town and, you know, the, all the condos over on River Road there. So, yeah, all the multi-unit continues to get stacked up over in the Green Village area in an area where let me finish, please. In an area where you talk about sewer capacity and so on and so forth for, you know, that, that it has to be this and it has to be that, you know, it has to be available to that. But yet all the residents in Green Village, or ninety percent of them, don't have that same very, very access to, to sewers. And it was actually taken away from us. So, yeah, I think it's, I don't think it's fair to the residents in Green Village. I think it's quite unfair and I, and, and it's quite clear that eighty, ninety percent of the, of multi-unit housing in Chatham Township is stuck all the way over there. While the people of Green Village have no sewer capacity. And all folks on the other side of town get to redevelop their third acre lot. You know, with, with multimillion dollar housing. It's, it's truly not fair to those of us who live over in that area of town.
Thank you, Dot. Dot, you wanted to say some things?
Yeah, yeah, just, I don't disagree with Dan at all, but I
You're breaking up.
Was a good time to break in.
I don't know if it's the microphone or the internet. You're breaking up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, my, my, I'm, I'm way in the wilds of the wilderness and the connections are bad. But let me try, let me see if I can sneak in my question. Is that better? Okay. My, my question was, and I, I'm not an expert on this, although I'm trying to figure out what's going on. Why couldn't, you were talking about going up rather than out. And Stacy pointed out that the issue with going up over the shop is parking. And I had two questions. I'm not sure parking is so much a zone as it is a, a construction issue regulation. But I have been reading a little bit about how the, many of the developments are being allowed to relax the number of parking spaces they need. And is this something that the township, that would work in the township? That is, if you, if you, could you put a, a, a usable second story over the ShopRite development? And relax the parking requirements a little bit? Can, can, this is the zoning account?
So I think you got the gist of the question. Can I just add to that?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
We already relaxed. We did it five twenty two. So I think it's, I, I think what Dot's saying, if we relax the, the, the requirements, we might be able to accomplish the, you know, the building. But I'm not so sure if we continue to do that, that ends well.
Yeah, and when you say relax, you mean relax the parking requirements for the commercial or the resident?
Well, the, the, the state has a certain amount of parking. Yeah, yeah, a certain amount of handicap, right? So, so we did that.
My, my understanding was that my understanding was that apartments, developers of apartments were allowed to relax the number of spaces. I may have gotten that wrong, but.
Right now, the ordinance reads that, that any residential developer coming in must meet the residential site improvement standards. If, if something needs to change with that, you'd have to ask for de minimis exception from the state with regards to RSIS. But as it stands now, the ordinance reads that any developer coming in would have to do, meet RSIS standards.
If I may, I think what she's referring to is the change in RSIS from a few years ago that made it a maximum
Now it's
requirement as opposed to a minimum. So your developers are for residential projects afforded more flexibility on parking because compared to historical data, we've learned that, especially for two and three bedroom apartments, that they actually take up less parking than we had previously thought of statistically. We, we usually did, you know, two cars for a two unit apartment. The average is actually closer. My understanding in New Jersey is closer to one point three or one point four cars. So as a result, we, we've seen towns allow developers more flexibility with residential parking.
Yeah, and, and I would say that's pretty typical, especially near transit. I don't know if that would necessarily hold the case here. You, you don't, you don't have a train station. You probably, you may have a bus stop out here. But, but yeah, as it stands now, the parking requirements are meeting RSIS, whether it's minimum or maximum.
Well, I, I can tell you with what was built at Charlie, the former Charlie Brown's site, which I don't believe it's filled to capacity. But my mom happens to live right on that corner over there in, in Juniper Village. And we were just talking about it today and she was looking out, out of her window. And, you know, at one o'clock in the afternoon, that site was, you know, the way she portrayed it, three quarters of the way full. And she also mentioned to me that they're already parking cars over at the ShopRite parking lot from that facility that we, we just put in. Sixty, sixty-three units at one point four car, I guess, every, every, you know, one, one point eight car winds up over at the ShopRite.
Can I, can I ask of the overlay zone here? What is the total acreage of this? It's not listed here.
It's seventeen acres.
Seventeen acres. So if it's ten units per acre, and I'll choose any one of these lots or any two or three of them, if I come to the table first, right? Ten units per acre. I mean, we know where some towns have gone with affordable housing. So let's just say I, I, what was the total? I'm sorry, seventeen? So if I collect five lots, let's say, five acres on three lots, do I win?
No, you, you still only get ten units an acre. And you still have to provide twenty percent.
Even if I, so if I go, so that you're, what you're saying is it's ten units per acre. We have a plan. It's ten units per acre.
Correct.
You come in and you want to put in thirty five units per acre.
You'd have to get a use variance.
You'd have to go, so you go to the zoning board? Yeah.
Yeah, just like any other parcel that they wouldn't, they wouldn't comply with the zoning. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no, it's spread out evenly amongst everybody. And I just blew this up just because I know the other, the other slide was a little bit small to see. But yeah, it's seventeen acres and ten units an acre, which, which is a pretty moderate density.
Well, that's why I raised, that's why I raised, not that I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no, no. But no, somebody can't come in and ask for more. They can't say, I'm gonna solve your entire
Yes, that's
thing out on one part. No, that's not possible. Not unless the zoning changes or they get a variance to do so.
I've, have, and other towns have builders sued to do such?
I, I can, I want
Whomever.
Go ahead, Jess. Yeah, so right now we have immunity for many builders coming in because we have a plan. We have for the third round and we have done everything we've needed to do into the fourth round to keep our immunity. As long as we continue following the steps laid out by the amended Fair Housing Plan, we can, we, we should not be sued. We have the protection afforded by the amended Fair Housing Act. And nobody can come in and say, in a part of town, for example, that's not in the overlay zone. They can't come in and say, I want to put fifty units an acre over here because, you know, they haven't built anything in their overlay zone. And that, that's not how it works. As long as we have a realistic development potential in this area, then we are immune from builder's remedy suits. And at this point, I think Kendra and myself and everybody on the subcommittee feels that, you know, building and zoning in the overlay zone in this manner is the most realistic potential to meet our unmet need out of everywhere else in the town. You know, somebody said something earlier about acre, lots that were a third of the acre. That only had a third of an acre, I'm sorry. That's not, when you, when you look at an affordable housing, from a affordable housing viewpoint, that's not something that's likely to produce affordable units because it's not going to be big enough. And when you produce an affordable unit, it's usually offset by market rate units unless it's again a hundred percent municipally sponsored project. So you always have to think about if it's, if it's not a municipally sponsored project and you're putting it somewhere in town, it has to have the capability to support an affordable unit being offset by market rate units. And I think that's what this plan does for us. And I think that as long as we continue to meet our benchmarks and continue to comply with the amended Fair Housing Act, we're not gonna have that problem where builders come in because we've done everything we're supposed to do. We are providing a realistic opportunity for affordable housing in the township.
So in conclusion, just a couple of things and then I'll, I'll open it up for questions. I always like to make sure that we say two things. One is that the plan, and I'm gonna recommend to, to obviously to the planning board that they adopt it, but that the, that you can find that the plan is consistent with what MLUL was municipal land use law. There's a specific requirement that your housing element in fair share plan guides the use of land in a manner that protects public health and safety and promotes general welfare. I believe that it does, in my professional opinion. And then secondly, it conforms with the Fair Housing Act, which gives, that's where the immunity comes from. That when you're in conformance with the Fair Housing Act and the Mount Laurel Doctrine, you've done a couple of things. You, you have provided the realistic opportunity for affordable housing. You've achieved access to affordable housing to meet your obligation. And then we considered lands in the township that are most appropriate for the construction of low and moderate income housing. Again, we have to live up to this idea that it's likely to redevelop. And as I said, we, we don't know exactly, that hasn't been defined. But in my opinion, and what we've done is reasonable and in sound planning. So in my, in my conclusion, I, I would recommend that the board adopt that. Just as it relates to next steps, so you all understand where this goes. If and when you adopt this tonight, within forty-eight hours, it must be submitted to Superior Court, to the program for their consideration. I'm assuming the Township Committee is gonna endorse this sometime in June. That will also be submitted to, to court. Once it gets submitted, as of July first through August thirty first, that's the sixty day window of objection periods. Anybody can come in and object. Now, the Fair Housing Act is very clear. You can't just object because your parcel wasn't included. It has to be based on something about the plan that's not compliant with the Fair Housing Act. And that's, and that's really the, the, the main requirement as to it relates to a legitimate objection. If we don't get anybody to object, if nobody objects to our plan, it will actually be recommended. It will be reviewed, recommended by the program to the Superior Court. I would imagine that by the end of this year, we would have that recommendation. You would then have to adopt the ordinances and go through that process. So as I said, you could probably have a final plan and ordinances in effect sometime early twenty twenty six. With that, I'll open that up to questions and public comment.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So the overlay over the ShopRite areas, is there a maximum height? I said, you said ten
Three stories.
The two stories above the commercial.
Correct.
Three-story buildings.
Correct.
If, if part, if a developer comes in, obviously, within ten years and says, I want to redevelop this. The tenant says, I have a lease, I want to stay. What does that look like?
I don't know. I'm not sure what tenant, the tenant requirements are. I mean, I, I would imagine that they have to either buy them out of the lease or they have to, you know, they have to honor the lease.
What if ShopRite says, I'm not moving?
If ShopRite, they can stay there for the next ten years. It doesn't, it, it, there is, you have created an opportunity. There's nothing that says that you actually have to make it happen. You've created a realistic opportunity in, on parcels that are likely to redevelop. If they don't redevelop, you've done what you're supposed to do. Now, can somebody come in in five years? There's something called a midpoint review and, and they say, ah, you know what? Ten units an acre is just not enough. I need twelve units an acre. That's a possibility. Somebody may come in and argue that we want higher density in this area. There's gonna be a point, however, that when you get to a certain density, it's actually gonna start to change the character of the area. So in my opinion, you have two, three stories that makes sense for that space. When you start getting to four and five stories, I think you're gonna be changing that, 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 it's a node. It's not a downtown. It's a node of commercial development. And there's gonna, there would be an argument to be had and we would push back as to what makes sense from a density perspective. But at, at this point, if they don't develop in the next ten years, they don't develop in the next ten years. They don't redevelop, they, they don't. And you've done what you're supposed to do to meet your unmet need.
So in ten years, on, on the eleventh year, when we go up for the fifth round of audits, now are they adding this and additional?
There may be additional obligation based upon whatever the methodology is at that point. We don't know. Um, we don't know what the rules will say, but it's it's a fair assumption that there's going to be some additional requirements.
The the overlay zones don't expire. So for example, the third round of overlays on still exists.
Correct.
This one would still exist. We would potentially look at it and over a diff, it could be a different one or the same overlay zone. Changing the zoning for that, but the the this overlay zone doesn't expire after ten years.
Yeah, it's a good point. Sorry.
Perpetually unless we get rid of it.
So. I can remember back, as I said, when. You know, the fidelity building, you know, Shopright was built. There was even an issue with putting the dormers on there. Okay, as far as zoning was concerned, if you, you know, we all know the Shopright mall, they have dormers, you know, which is goes back to why. The, we call it the Ace Hardware. Mall, if you will, is built the way it is, you know, basically one story. That was the A and P. Mind you, and so. What criteria was used to say that three stories is acceptable, but five stories isn't?
Well, because typically, well, first, five stories, I think, is is definitely getting into more of a a larger downtown. Um, where you have transit available, where you.
And three isn't?
No, I not my opinion. I think three is a is a pretty typical node, small downtown height where you have first story. Retail, second and third um residential.
So in other words, we're looking to create a downtown area because it really never has been a downtown area. There's been some retail there, but, you know, I never really considered Chatham Township as having a downtown.
No, I think.
Area, especially, you know, like I said, we're we're talking, you know, farmland and a florist.
Yeah, I mean.
Only only thirty-five years ago.
Right. I mean, things change. We know, obviously, we nothing can stay the same in in in. As it relates to land use. So things will redevelop, redevelop over time. And I think in this particular instance, the reason why this. Area was interesting and and targeted is that you already have existing development occurring there. And so if it's redevelopment that's going to occur. Create an create a a space that is architecturally interesting and supports residential as well as non-residential. Commercial activity. And in the order to do that, in order to make it likely to redevelop, it would. Typically, in a mixed-use development, you wouldn't have just one story of retail and one story of of. Uh, residential. It's normally two over one. Um, I'm not suggesting that you're creating a downtown, but I'm suggesting that if redevelopment were to occur, it would be a better. Um, development layout than what's there now.
And and along with this current. Plan of redevelopment. Wouldn't it make sense to to sewer the rest of Green Village? You know, Green Village hasn't hasn't had sewers. You know, although they are not like the rocky terrain of, say, over on this side of town and River Road, it was. It was the capacity was taken away. For other development areas in town, mainly Geralda Farms, so on and so forth, and and also condos down on River. Um.
Yeah, I can't, I don't be.
So what, but but I would certainly, and I would throw it out to the mayor and the and and the members of the township committee and to pass it on. You know, along with any project. They should, you know, throw the throw the sewer pipe down Green Village so that the residents the residents in Green Village, which are bearing the burden of this. Okay, um, can live like everybody else does in town. Because I think that that's only fair. You know, we've we've watched all that go by. Um, you know, and and the burdens, the burdens of of everything as far as retail and high density. Basically, I don't think it it can be denied have been put down in that area of town, but yet the residents in that area of town. Have not only been denied services. But also have had to come in front of some of the boards here in town just to continue their their own way of life. And I won't get into those issues, you know, we we'll we'll talk, I'm talking about some grandfathered um instances. You know, and and it seems that area of town has to continue to to fend themselves in order to to keep. Their traditional way of living and it's really, really disturbing.
Well, I would say the um. Your concerns, Mr. Miller, are are referred. What whether or not. The sewer service, I I guess what I would say is is certainly would welcome. Uh, as as the rest of the committee, I think, if I can speak to them momentarily, uh, would welcome any uh. Any feedback. Discussions with regard to that. Uh, that element of it. Um, I would say that uh the introduction of sewer service while it it may. There are advantages and disadvantages to it, and I think you sort of have to have a well-rounded evaluation of of putting one in. There was consideration. Uh, elsewhere in the township and. Um, there was decisions made there and I would say very debitless. Contradictory positions on it, so. Uh, and at this point, what I can say anecdotally, I have not, um, in my brief period, uh, I've not. Met with any residents or received otherwise, uh, any feedback suggesting, well, gee, we very much want it. But if that is certainly changes, we certainly would uh en-engage in dialogue to 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 explore it further. But at this point, I've not. Received any feedback along those lines. Came to the year, the first person's mentioned that. But and and at the end of the day, you know, it's it's quite possible people, uh, the residents. Embrace perhaps not being on on the system, uh, that they were disadvantaged to it.
Thirty years ago, it wasn't the case. I don't know if I have the wherewithal to get the petitions together again at this point in time, but. You know, I can tell you that there was, there's eighty-five percent of the residents in nineteen ninety-four wanted it. Okay, when it was taken away, you know, and part of that. Quite honestly, the sewer capacity was was brought in and and given to us because of, you know, in. In the mid to late nineteen sixties, the proposals of the malls that that exist there now, you know, it was all part of that. Um, but I don't think that's a debate for today, obviously, but. You know, it's it's definitely something to consider in the future of, you know. Exactly what we're doing and who it's impacting. You know, because it certainly doesn't impact, you you know, it doesn't impact a lot of folks on this on this area of town. But it definitely impacts everybody over there, you know, I mean. It just even, you know, the residents trying to get in and out of their driveway, you know, there's definitely been a a change. And, you know, it continually gets to be put on that that end of town and not not this end of town. And there should be some considerations, you know, and in regards to the sewer line. I don't think anybody should have to hook up, but the sewer line should be there so that when their septic systems do. Wind up reaching their, you know, because they're good for thirty years. You know, then then folks should have the should should be able to have the ability to to do such. You know, rather than to have to build yet another septic system. Thanks.
I have a question. Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, Dan, of course, there is a cost to the residents to do that. You just you just explained it well. In looking at this overlay zone, uh, did we look at Madison's plan? And do we know what Madison's overlay zone is? Because, you know, there's some, there's some, I don't know what all of it is. There's certainly some commercial there. There is a church. Who, you know, down at the end of the stretch by by Shumpike Field.
Privy to Madison's plan. I'm not sure what they did or didn't do yet. No.
I mean, it just, you know, this is what's wrong with affordable housing, right? Every town is left in a silo. Uh, there's so much wrong with it, but but this is this is one of the things that's wrong with it. We're looking at this and to Dan's, you know, point. Right, wrong, indifferent. It may, it may be even multiplied if if he's correct. So. If if they are doing something, so I don't know. You you can say something.
All right, if they if they if they build, say, at at what is it, two Shumpike? If they build, you know, the the little Madison uh professional building that's there. You know, we have to remember that the the town line is the is the yellow line going down Shumpike Road. Okay, so if, you know, you certainly have that little office building. You certainly have. The larger gray one on the corner for folks who don't know. And you also have the church that runs on the corner of what is that green and uh. And Shumpike, okay? And I mean, if those aren't potential sites for Madison to target, I don't know what is. So now, you know. We've we've doubled that and to my point again, put it all on the folks over on that side of town and and everybody. You know, everywhere else in town skates.
That that's not a unique, I mean, we represent a number of towns, as does Kendra's offices planner. Um. It's not an uncommon phenomenon. We all are scrambling to meet the June thirtieth deadline, every municipality in the state. So it's not uncommon for one town to not be specifically privy to what their adjacent neighbors are doing. It's just the way that the legislation. Is being implemented.
Yeah, right. But if you put it on a border, you know that that potential is there. If you put it in the center. In in the center or somewheres else, you know that that potential is not. So, you know, that's that's the point. I'm not saying that we have that ability. I'm just saying it that by what we are doing, it does create that opportunity for that to happen.
Any other questions from the board on this end? Everybody's good. You got him?
Actually, good. Yeah, please, man.
Just a few quick comments. So. Uh, this is, as you said last time, last week, this is not a perfect science and there's never a great spot. To put any of this, but I think, you know, thinking about, not to relive the third round, but. That was a very vigorous debate and discussion about where. That should go in the third round. You know, when this building, talking about other places, when this building was identified, the uproar. In the town was immense. So if we're suggesting now to put it in places like this again. We're just potentially subjecting ourselves to the same discussion and issues that would land us in trouble potentially with affordable housing and fair share. There was another argument that was made in the third round that it would make sense to, but it was against putting it in this location, which was there's no services here. Services are up by Shopright in that part of town. And ultimately, that was a. A logical point that I think resonated with a lot of people in town, at least my understanding. So now. At least if that was a point that was validated at the time, the third round, this certainly would be. Uh, applicable as part of that, given the location of this. It does make some make some sense as nothing's great. It does make some sense to take an early commercial area. That is commercial in nature and. Potentially revitalize it as part of your obligation if it ends up going that way, which it may never may never be done anyway in ten years. So. Nothing is perfect, but if it this allows us to. Maintain our zoning, because if we don't do anything. As we identified builder remedy. Somebody will do it for us and the court will do it for us in a way that we don't want it to be done. So. Of all the possibilities that are out there that others have gone through to vet the suitability of these, this feels like. As logical a place within the town. Uh, as any. Where it could not be potentially adjudicated in court that it wasn't reasonable of a location. Not saying whether it's supported or not, or it's a good place or not. But we just keep the larger picture in mind. I think this board does and the and the township council has to. Of what we're trying to avoid, which is avoid the specter of builder remedy.
Dot, do you have a question out there before we open it up to the public?
I don't see her.
Yeah. In the wilderness out there somewhere, so. I have a question in regards to. Can't really dictate this, but uh but I'll ask it anyway. So we have to come up with this plan. It's an overlay zone. There's a lot of talk about, you know, uh, going up or mixed-use residential retail. I'm not sure how much retail will be left by the time we get to twenty forty-five. Um, so that's always sounds good on paper, but we do, we see an awful lot of empty retail with with. Residential on top of it right now. That's not a good look either. Uh, but in terms of that. I think one of the things when it comes down to good planning in 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 a town and. General affordable housing, not um low income, I'll call it affordable housing. You know, it's 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 maybe nice to have some mixed, but certainly ownership. Uh, is a big portion of what makes a town, I think, you know, really strong because people buy in. They're here. They're going to stay here. The more of this opportunity that we create and the more uh residents you get. That are rentals, obviously, there's a there's a perpetual drain on on all the. You know, infrastructure in the town and 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 the use of uh the facilities, et cetera. That seems to never go away, whereas to ownership, it gets somewhat limited. People stay. Right? For years and years and years. Their kids, they kids age out, they stay, uh, where rental is a constant turnover. From a master plan perspective, um, and from a housing element perspective, even though I know fair share has pushed the rental for. I know why they're doing that. Um, and in some degrees, it makes sense, but uh, is there something that this board can do to basically say? If you are going to build. That the market rate units. Could be owned, could be ownership, not rental, not rentals. I know everybody wants to build rentals. All the all the builders want to. Build rentals. I think I know why they do it, but. But can we, can we put?
You can't do, no, you can't say that a certain percentage has to be for sale. I will say the density that we're proposing at ten units acre would support townhouses. Um, and so you can imagine townhouses with a retail component as part of the property potentially. Um, as as one of the the ways of addressing ten units an acre, providing for redevelopment. So. You can't say they must be rental or they must be for sale. You can say that they are at a particular density and create. Um, requirements for that. Uh, and I think I have in the ordinance. I'll have to take a look if it's not there already, but I think townhomes are permitted. Um, and so it's permitting that type of use. And and I will say in in towns like this. Developers are more apt to do townhouses and to do for sale because they can get such a high. Um, price for them and 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 do like a stacked townhouse for the affordable. Uh, and maybe rent it, but sometimes they'll they'll sell it as well. So it's not unusual.
I I have one last, I'm sorry, one last question. Uh, in the last round, there was an element inside the actual. Now, I think this was the agreement with with fair share housing. So now that it's kind of. Been placed in the courts and I'm not sure where where we're at now, but there was an element in the last agreement that basically put in unlimited liability. On the taxpayers of every town to ensure that you would comply and actually. Do whatever it took and whatever it costs the taxpayers to apply to get to that number and meet the fair share housing. It was it was written into the language of the agreement uh that was signed. Uh, no business would ever. Do such a thing because it just placed an unlimited liability on one party. Is there still an unlimited liability on the town? Because it doesn't seem so the way this is structured.
I'm and I'm not familiar with that standard that was put into a settlement agreement. Must be in different terminology. I mean. As a municipality, you have the responsibility to make sure you meet the obligation, but. I I don't know what the liability piece of it is that you're speaking to, but at this point. What we're doing is complying with the Fair Housing Act. I can't tell you what a settlement negotiation will do that. So it's. Let's say fair share housing objects to our plan. There will most likely have to be a settlement to be had. So that settlement agreement would be done between the township committee and fair share housing or. And and so, um, but I can talk to you offline about what what you're referring to specifically because their their settlement agreements are pretty standard across the board. So if it was standard language, I would have seen him in in many other situations.
We have, would, does the township committee have a settlement? I mean, if this gets.
The third round, but.
No, in the fourth round.
Fourth round, we don't know. We don't know until somebody objects.
I'm just wondering, i- if that's the language that essentially speaks to like funding shortfalls. Is so let's say if we had a like, whether it's cornerstone, right, or Arbor Green. Um, in that case where they've put together their pro forma, we looked at the finances, they're saying they're contributing this much, maybe we're contributing something or nothing. And costs go up. Um, and now the project would die if not for more funding. We would have to. Yes, that's by, it was done by settlement agreement, by by agreements with the developers in some cases. It was also done by, I believe, here, but. Pretty standard practice. Kendra could speak about that with the third round. That was required in almost all places, the resolution or ordinance that says we will fund.
And you still require, you are required to do that with the fourth round. That's per, that that's not just settlement agreement. That's actually Fair Housing Act requirement.
Is that what you're referring to?
That you have to, you have to make, so.
I think that might be.
Like, for instance, the three-unit affordable housing project. If they can't find funding anywhere, municipality has to use the trust fund to be able to back that up. If there's not enough money in the trust fund, then yes, bonding would potentially have to occur. But you have a pretty healthy spending uh trust fund and I potentially see it. But you have a pretty healthy spending uh trust fund, and I potentially see it continue to be pretty healthy. So, um, but yeah, that's I I that's not only just settlement, but that's definitely in the rules and regulations and the law.
So you're saying if somebody else doesn't build it, we build it basically, or we subsidize that build?
We would
The affordable, not on the overlay.
Not on the overlays.
Right.
Like this specific
A hundred percent municipally sponsored.
Right.
Yeah.
If we entered into a developer's agreement for affordable housing, most likely that would be about on the overlay zone, something like that.
That's all, that's all marketed, that's all on the market side.
Yeah, that's what I was just question.
Thank you. Yeah, to to the chairman's earlier point, um with regard to overlay strategy, we've got one forty-one, twenty-five percent, that's thirty-five. And you're assuming uh you know, a twenty percent affordable housing allocation. So you're looking at like a hundred seventy. That doesn't preclude, and that's rental, that doesn't preclude
Doesn't have to be rental.
Uh, ownership.
No, it doesn't preclude ownership.
Where then the percentage, I think, is is fifteen percent?
No, it's it will be a twenty percent set aside. For vacant land towns, that's that's what the required set aside is. So whether it's for sale or rental, you're gonna have a twenty percent set aside. But it does, but this
Either strategy can certainly be pursued.
Correct, absolutely. There's nothing that says that it must be rentals. And and that's what the Fair Housing Act did also is is they took away the rental, the family rental, so let's back up, the rental bonus credit. In the third round, you got rental bonus credit. So for every rental, you got a credit for it up to a certain amount. That they took that away in the Fair Housing Act. They really are looking at hundred percent projects, special needs projects that get the bonus credits and redevelopment projects that get that the bonus credit. So it's not such a focus on rental units in the fourth round as it was in the third round.
So just to be clear on the rentals versus the for sale units, you could potentially have where the retail properties are. You could have apartments above going up up to three stories total, including the retail. But the periphery properties where you currently have a bank, you could potentially have townhomes for sale. So you could have a mixed
Absolutely.
It's really up to
The developer of the property.
Can make it lucrative, who finds it economically viable.
Yes.
We keep saying it's three stories. Are we talking about our height ordinance, which is essentially thirty-five feet, two and a half, three stories?
It it, yeah, I think the ordinance requires allows you to go three stories and it's thirty-five feet, I believe. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, to be more specific.
Yeah.
But in part of talking about ten, a density of ten units, that was also to preserve that two to three stories, because if you're starting to talk about more, you gotta go higher.
Yeah, potentially.
Squishing it in, you gotta push it on.
Very good. Any more questions from the board?
One, one quick one. Are we maxed out on our um special needs type affordable housing and so on and so forth, or would that be able to be incorporated in this overlay zone?
Yes.
Exactly.
Um, I mean, it's possible that if we were able to work with a special needs provider to find a house, you could still get credits for that. There's no max on the special needs credits. There's actually a requirement and you'll see it in the plan. There's there's a for the RDP, not the overlay zones, but the the skateboard area, there's some minimum requirements. You have to have so many family units and so many family rental units. Um, and that's per, that's per the regulations. You can have as many special needs units as you want, but you still have to meet certain family requirements, family units. Special needs is not considered family units.
Okay, what I, yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at. Could, would that be a possibility of being incorporated into a redevelopment plan in the overlay zone?
Yeah, you, we we allow special needs units in the in the overlay.
More specific. So we have a group home on Hillside.
Mm-hmm.
One home.
Okay.
We got four credits for it.
Right.
So could we put a group home in in
Yeah.
And you'd get the four credits.
You would get, I mean, yeah.
I don't think you get bonus anymore.
You don't, well, you not on the unmet need sites, right? You would only get If you, let's say you did, if your RDP was higher, you could do a portion of those as special needs units and you would get bonus credits for that. But but your RDP is low, so that you you have to provide family units on that for 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 those three units. But that doesn't deter you from doing special needs units and getting credit for that, even going into the future potentially.
So there's a threshold on
Family units that you have to provide.
You can go
And yeah, correct, exactly, exactly.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, we're gonna open it up to the public, so please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and
And you have to get sworn in if you're gonna provide comment.
There you go.
Good evening.
You swear from the testimony you'll give in front of the board with all truth.
I do.
Can you state your name for the record?
Uh, Michael Kelly, Mountain Avenue. Uh, I was uh on the township committee during much of the uh round three. Uh, ultimately the mayor and on the planning board, so I I wanted to say that I I thought that this plan was exceptionally well executed. Uh, I think to negotiate a hundred and forty-one units down to four, uh, it it was a great accomplishment. And uh, so uh, I just wanted to say that uh it uh it's a lot better than the two hundred units in round three, and the gray hair that I have was part of the result of that. So congratulations on the on the uh on the plan, and if I understand the correctly reading it, that uh it looks like the expense involved with it, any of the municipal expense with it, uh, we can realistically expect it to be covered by the developers uh fee that we've been accumulating and will be accumulating over the next uh years. So again, that um that bodes well as well, barring any really disastrous surprise, I guess. Two things, though, um I've been kind of following the planning board agenda since the start of the year, you know, waiting for for this topic to come up. And I um I I guess there have been about eleven meetings, four of those were canceled entirely. Um, so, and I didn't see this topic on any of the agendas since the start of the year, and I was wondering if I missed something, whether this is really the first time that the planning board is is hearing this plan uh and how it was developed. Is it a staff, the staff developed plan? Was it uh, where, how do we get to this to this point?
So we, um, the Affordable Housing Committee was put together towards the end of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Um, we didn't actually receive our actual obligation until May. Um, so a month ago, we kind of knew what our RDP was going to be moving forward. Uh, so we had been meeting as an affordable housing committee by, I would say, at least once or twice a month. Um, we were here in April, I want to say April twenty-first, it was on a planning board agenda. Uh, and so that it was not executive session, that was a public, an open public meeting. So um, we did discuss the 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 kind of the basics of the plan at that point. Uh, so it's not the first time the planning board has seen it, uh, but I will say that the process that the township went through to come up with the plan is very similar to all my other municipalities. I I represent seventeen of them, um, that there was just not a lot a lot of time to
Yeah.
To put this out there to the public.
And the committee, the Affordable Housing Committee consisted of some members of the planning board as well as staff or?
Uh, yes, yes.
So it was it was a subcommittee?
It was a subcommittee, yes, correct.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, the deadline is June thirtieth for the township committee to endorse this?
Not not necessarily. Um, some towns are doing it by June thirtieth, some are not. The the Fair Housing Act base specifically says the planning board shall adopt and within forty-eight hours submit. So some towns are then endorsing and submitting after the fact, um, before June thirtieth. Some are actually waiting till after June thirtieth.
Because if if it's the form of an ordinance, it needs
It's not, it would be a resolution with the township committee.
Okay.
And I'll be submitting tomorrow, the assuming that it is adopted. Um, I'll be submitting the plan and a certification tomorrow to the program saying this is the adopted plan. Um, and we're complying with the amended Fair Housing Act. And then following um what I anticipate will be the endorsement, I'll do the same. I'll upload the certification with the endorsement.
Yeah, and Mike, I would just say that the la- the last meeting was really the most broad-based discussion that we've had. That was the June second meeting prior to this meeting. So this board has really just
It was on the June second agenda?
It was on
It's April twenty-one.
April.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah.
It's, it felt like it was two weeks ago. I'm sorry.
Pretty much ninety percent.
Alright. Okay, ti- times moving, times moving by fast. But that, yes, so we did have one extensive session on this uh April twenty-first. And and just, you know, so you know, the members of the Affordable Housing Committee, which we did not have uh in your time, uh, were the two members of the township committee um uh also who sit on the planning board. There were no other members of the planning board on the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a a couple of points on the um on the skate park site. Um, if I read the appendix correctly, it's a limit of two and a half stories or thirty-five feet, which I think is the height height requirement right across town for all the residential areas. So that was reassuring to see um, four units, that three units actually fulfill our obligation for four units, which is great to hear. The um speaking historically for a minute, yes, I think our understanding always was that the reason why we kept the the footprint for the skate park uh undisturbed was because it did give us uh leverage to uh develop that, even though it was very close to being on the uh the buffer of the uh of the wetland. So that's um but I guess the the corollary question that I have is, is that if the planning board and the township committee could uh could look at the possibility of not having to limit the development to that actual footprint, which is kind of a a wacky angle compared to the existing uh affordable housing that's on there, that if there's any way to negotiate uh something that's a compromise, maybe moving it a little bit closer to the street uh in order to angle it in a way that complements the existing affordable housing building there instead of being kind of catty, catty cornered to it.
Yeah, my understanding that John um was gonna, we were gonna work as a group with a nonprofit developer to 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 do that with creating concept plans that we can submit to DEP. Um, and my understanding was there was some flexibility, didn't have to be specifically in that configuration.
Yeah, that would be great. And then as far as the overlay zone, um, if I read the appendix correctly, the the height limitation looked like it was gonna be thirty-six feet.
About thirty-six.
Um, three stories, but it looked like the third story might have to be set back for ten feet from any public facing direction, which sounded like an interesting and and good thought. Although there was some allowance for other structures to go above that thirty-six feet, uh, anything from a elevator uh shaft to it sounded like cupulas or turrets and whatever, but so there is that allowance in there. The uh is the, as a mixed use zone, is there gonna be a requirement for retail uh as well as uh mu- multifamily? Because
Not right now, there isn't. Like, there isn't a percentage of of retail that we put in there. Again, it's a draft ordinance. If we need to tweak it, we can. Um, I always find that there's a pro and con. If you put, if you require a certain number, amount of retail, that they may potentially become empty in the future. Uh, if you don't require a certain percentage of retail, you have a very small little space that doesn't do much for you. So um, right now, we've just, I've left it open.
Mm-hmm. I guess, I guess my initial thinking was that the planning board pay some attention to that, because I think that that retail node provides a service to the township now. And uh, do we want to leave ourselves vulnerable to a developer coming in and saying, I want to go a hundred percent uh residential uh, three stories and because it fits his financial needs and benefit, but it might not meet the benefits of the township. So that would be something I would suggest that the planning board take a look at.
Yeah, right now, multi, full multi, hundred percent multifamily housing is not permitted, as so that's not even a possibility.
I'm sorry.
Full, like a hundred percent multifamily is not a permitted use in that zone as it's drafted currently. So it would have to have some component. We just don't specify how much.
Okay, okay. Still, I guess that Mike request that you think about that uh stands of I guess I have some concerns about the parking requirement that would go with the the full load of that um those units in that, in the overlay zone. The hundred and forty-two market rates with it would to to give us an extra thirty-five units affordable is a total of a hundred and seventy-seven units. The only language I saw in the in the appendix was that parking would have to be, quote, in accordance with township standards. And if assuming that a market rate unit requires two parking spaces and an affordable unit might require one, that would be three hundred and nineteen parking units on top of the whatever is required by the the retail. So it just uh
Parking has in the residential parking, it they don't discern between market and affordable. So if it's a, it's per bedroom.
Right.
And so they would have to meet RSIS.
And I'm just talking about total gross parking too. So I mean, is there to meet that, is it envisioned that there might have to be a parking deck underneath or behind or or something?
I we, I haven't gotten into that detail of going through development layout analysis.
Um, okay.
There would, there would most likely be an o- an opportunity for shared parking as well, um, as an analysis of what that looks like. Uh, for especially when you do a mixed use.
They'd make the case that retail during the day and residential at night for the same parking space.
Exactly.
Okay. I think that's it as far as the affordable housing goes. I guess the only other comment I would make is that uh Dan, as far as your analysis of the of the multifamily burden, uh, all being cause uh kind of uh hitting that corner of the township. You know, I I Cardinal Hill, you recognize, and that's a hundred and twenty units. Um, the the new enclave uh on the Averyd Estate is fifty-three units. Um, Chatham Glen, I don't have a number off the top of my head. I don't know if somebody does, but
Yeah.
Nine hundred, of which seventy is affordable. And uh, and then the uh, the group homes that are scattered around town as well. So we're talking about twelve hundred units at least uh scattered around the the rest of the township. So if that makes Green Village feel any better, that uh just point that out.
We'll take that into consideration, Mike. Thanks.
Thank you much.
Yeah, yeah, just so you know, my, I do, I do share some of the concerns about uh some, you know, points that I made last meeting of around the gas stations. It's nice to have two gas stations in town or a gas station, three actually, Green Village. Don't want to slight you, Dan, but but uh in 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 the overlays, uh, we have two gas stations.
They keep coming after it because it's a grandfather use.
So, you know, uh although it wouldn't be deemed critical infrastructure, you know, if if we ever had another Sandy, it certainly becomes critical infrastructure. Um, and it's nice to be able to, uh, yeah, I I'm afraid, my fear is that something like that, a small lot, we're incentivizing changes. Um, and that's, that's a concern. Mr. Carr?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yes, I do.
Can you state your name to the record, please?
Yes, my name is Stuart Carr, C A R R, from Three Crestwood Drive in Chatham Township, New Jersey. I have a few um procedural related questions, but then a couple of other things came up um prior to that, so I just want to speak to for a moment. I'm a layman. I'm not really into this very heavily, but I'm aware that on Shunpike and Green Avenue, Madison has that as a bullseye for there on the other side of town, affordable housing cohort. And I would suggest perhaps that as our planner, we don't just look my, somewhat to this Sullivan comment, um, not look just myopically at our town, but perhaps our towns next door. And I would say fundamentally, understanding that right across the street, we have that kind of zoning would be something that would be of import to the committee or the uh, the planning board, just as a matter of general information. So perhaps doing a bit of diligence without just saying, hey, all I know about is Chatham, I don't know what's going on across the street, probably could work on that just a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate your comment. However, everybody's running tangentially the same timeframe, so plans aren't even out yet.
This is years ago. This has been here for like round three, I think. I don't even think it's round four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Now, what I'm saying is that parcel from Green Village Road, and I know on the Green Avenue where the church is, excuse me, that is part of their uh cohort for their affordable housing. That's say, whether it's a uh overlay zone or whatever, but I'm just saying that's something that these people should know about. Let me get this right across the street, just as more general information. A little bit to the Miller factor here. The issue of taking back, you know, the zoning, so to speak. We had the thirty-seven units, that's the twenty-five percent, or thirty-six units, whatever you call it, okay? Is there a way, again, market to affordable wise, again, I'm gonna get shot here. But in any case, the concept of market to affordable, if the town were to come up with a market to affordable or a hundred percent scenario for thirty-seven units, can you then back out that overlay zone because you met the thirty-seven?
Yeah, in my
And that happened, had it, that's again, kind of the Miller where that's going. Because again, sometimes you can't do it because you got the overlay. But if you comply with that component, can you pull it back or is that then backdoor become a taking, et cetera, et cetera? Take a moment, that may be the attorney versus you, I'm not sure. Take a moment. That may be the attorney versus you. I'm not sure.
So technically, um, you know, you could have somebody object to pulling the overlay zone away from them at some point. But if you've met your obligation elsewhere or with a different mechanism, yeah, for sure, they can, they can take the place of those, of that overlay zone. Just FYI, this Affordable Housing Committee did look at market to affordable to, uh, address some of these requirements and um, in that vein, the, the folks that we looked to had no interest in doing market to affordable. So that was just one thing as it relates to, um, any other mechanism. If, if for whatever reason, they want to do a hundred percent project and pay for thirty-seven units, um, in the future, and we find a parcel for that, it, it could certainly take the place of the unmet need overlay zone.
I'm speaking conceptually. You talked, and again, maybe the attorney, but the taking dimension. If you put the overlay on,
Mm-hmm.
then they have more optionality than they had yesterday.
Correct.
We go over for the Miller factor again and find a place for thirty-seven units, hell, M two A or find another place, whatever it happens to be. Can we then unilaterally as a board and as a committee, take away that overlay zone without having a taking potential?
It's not a taking. It wa- in that particular instance, you're, you're taking away the overlay zone option, but you're doing that because you're able to create those units elsewhere.
I'm saying from our perspective, I'm talking about
From their perspective, I.
Do they have a standing?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that anybody could always sue you for taking all the way they're doing.
Maybe it's a.
The standard.
Help us out.
Means that the property by regulation has to be economically in utile.
It has to be made economically in utile. So as long as, as long as there's uh, the underlying zoning for commercial remains in place, I would not be concerned about that.
Okay, so that's available, conceptually. Okay, thank you on that. All right, now a series of, uh, questions. Um, conceptual and procedural. Number one, we went right to, uh, April as opposed to May, whenever it was, um, right to the planning board from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Could you procedurally have gone to the township committee first with the same presentation? And then got formal public feedback? And then after that, what I get it conceptually, or it just happens to be that it's fine, but if people had comments at the committee level, conceivably that draft document could have been tweaked before it got presented to the planning board. So possibly could that have happened?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, the compressed timeline imposed upon municipalities by the Fair Housing Act was not something that allowed for a ton of time for, to go back and forth between the council and the planning board. But I will say this is being adopted by the planning board because it's an element of the master plan. So, you know, just, we've had conversations with council and the subcommittee included members of both council, planning board and professionals. So, um, there has been, um, I know my, I have spoken, um, at the council meeting about the process and what was going on, and so has, um, Kendra. So I, I think there has been input and there was an opportunity for input. That all being said, the compressed timeline that we had to pull the plan together in, um, and it didn't allow for as much as I think everybody would have liked. Um, and as Kendra also just pointed out, um, we just received our obligation not that long ago. I believe it was in the beginning of, uh, end of, end of May. The court was supposed to provide our obligation by March thirty-first because, um, we were objected to by the New Jersey Builders Association. So we had an even more compressed and condensed timeline than, um, the act called for due to the fact that we never got an order.
That's understood. April twenty-one, we had a meeting at the planning board where something was delivered. Does that mean after, what, when was it, uh, committee meeting after April twenty-one, May fifth or something?
Twenty-second.
A twenty-second. Okay, so if I had to come to the April twenty-second meeting and said, hey, mayor, uh, members of the committee, I have some questions about the planning board meeting last night about these particular items that were discussed. Could the plant, could the committee have responded to my question? Or is it locked into the planning board as a quasi judicial entity because it was presented at the planning board on the twenty-first of April? Therefore, functionally, that this body from there to effectively June thirty, and therefore members of the public could not speak to their elected representatives about what was in the proposed plan? How does that work mechanically? Is that a policy decision that the committee makes that they're not going to comment? Could the committee have commented if somebody asked? Is there some kind of regulation statutory requirement that says, once it gets into the planning board box, as a quasi judicial entity, you can no longer speak to it until they make their decision?
And there's no statutory rule about when it gets to the planning board, who you can talk to now.
Yeah, and just practically speaking, uh, and April eighth, this was discussed in an outline form at the Township Committee Workshop Meeting.
Prior to.
Prior to, correct.
Good. Okay, thank you. So I could have come there and bellyache and say, wait a minute, what's going on? Terrific. Okay, so that's something. Uh, I was terrific. Okay. So unlike some other towns, then the Township Committee, to your credit, had it out in the public. If somebody wanted to say, wait a minute, I don't like that, I like that, then at least the, uh, they may not, may have chosen not to respond, but they could have responded to a member of the public because we saw something prior to it getting to the planning board level.
Correct.
Terrific.
Practically, they could have heard and maybe not responded, but they would have received it.
But again, you, you could have, I could have made those questions and not just say, hey, we can't respond. You could have chosen not to, okay. But, uh, the council here real quickly, even if it goes directly to the planning board in this scenario, let's assume we didn't have that meeting, okay? If it went to the planning board proper on April twenty-one, and then we had an April twenty-two committee meeting, and I asked the question about what happened yesterday at the planning board, is the committee precluded from making comment? Or they just say, we choose not to respond on advice of council? How does that work? Is there any constraint on a municipality answering questions from the public after it gets into the planning board purview?
I, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent following your question, but
Straight forward.
No, the, you know, the planning board, it's an element of the master plan. So the planning board, you know, they must adopt it, but in, the council also has to endorse it.
Do you mind? I, I don't mind jumping in because I, I think. What, what you're asking is, once this was informally presented to the planning board in an open meeting on April twenty-first, was it?
Twenty-one, brief.
If the township committee had held a meeting the next day.
Which we did, I guess.
Would, would, would they have been able to answer questions about it?
Because.
No, nothing, nothing, just because the planning board heard an informal presentation, nothing would preclude the discussion of it at a subsequent township committee meeting. And I want to emphasize, um, what was presented in April was an informal presentation because we knew this was coming down the timeline.
Understood.
This is the public hearing on that in the plan itself. But no, to answer your question, the township committee, nothing would stop the township committee from commenting on planning board business and nothing stops the planning board from commenting on township committee business.
And that's what we have in certain jurisdictions and where the planning board actually could have a meeting and then the public could ask the council or committee, depending on the particular municipality, certain questions and the, uh, council or committee could choose as a policy matter to say, we don't want to respond. But there's no legal constraint or there are no, no, uh, legal.
Not, not unless the, an attorney tells the client, whether it's the municipal attorney representing the township committee or, uh, the planning board attorney representing the planning board, that it falls within the attorney-client privilege, provided that that's not a a, a factor.
Understood.
Uh, there, there's always cross-sharing between the two. And if you're speaking of a different town that has a different policy, I'm not aware of that.
But, but it's a policy matter though. It's not a legal constraint. That's the gist. Okay, thank you on that. All right, um.
Just, just to, to that point also, I think the township committee, we tried to push out information as soon as we could and we should, as soon as we had, and even up to the last meeting of the township committee, which was well after the April twenty-first meeting, I made sure to address the highlights of what was presented here, which I had, I was advised maybe to be cautious because of the planning board, but it basically replicated everything I had shared with the public probably a month prior. So, uh, we've been pushing out information uh, and I have not received advice otherwise until the last meeting and just shared pretty much the highlights of everything you just saw here.
To be clear, I'm speaking generically, not speaking about this group, so we understand. Ken, it's a shahadi, um, the comment that was there, I remember that now, et cetera. So it's just a generic set of questions that I'm just trying to get understand, uh, at my own level. Okay, so we got that, uh, there. All right, um, for members, uh, prior to discussion, okay, we got that. Cool. Members of the areas. Okay, uh, different jurisdiction, probably the same thing. If something came up, for example, in a environmental committee or environmental commission meeting, which again is not a quasi judicial body, it's an appointed body. If something comes up like that and a member of the public asks an environmental commission person about something that's before the planning board, is there any legal impediment to that environmental commission responding? Or are they somehow collared because it's in front of the planning board?
Uh, I would, uh, answer the question in the same way, but would add one particular bit of caution, which is that the environmental commission serves at the pleasure of the township committee and the planning board. So oftentimes, individual committee members may decline to comment because their reports are considered as part of the evidentiary record in front of the planning board.
Point taken, but that's individual members. That's not the body. So if somebody is not on one of those separate bodies, there's nothing to preclude those people from responding, should they so choose, to a member of the public asking a question about a planning board item.
Right, the same answer would remain from the previous question.
Thank you on that score. Okay, um, policy decision, I get where square there. Um, an accomplishment. Oh, yeah, uh, the substitution thing. I think we got that nailed down. Um, June thirty, we have this. So the items that are in, this goes a little bit to the Miller factor again, the items, uh, in the planning board document at June thirty, if we want to substitute in and out, so long as we meet the timing constraints and the other required criteria, et cetera, et cetera, we can do some, let's make a deal, mix and choose type of thing. Is that correct?
At what point?
Uh, between now, that's, I guess, figure out between June thirty and sometime. If we decide, for example, we don't want to do the three units there, we want to do it someplace else. And we can get it, we could find the property, whatever, and for whatever reason, we decide to move it. Can we do a substitution, assuming we meet the other time constraints? Are we kind of locked into this? Or is this more of a template?
We're locked into, this is a, this is their plan. If, if in the future, after you received the judgment of compliance from court, which occurs sometime in the next six months, let's say, if in another eight to twelve months, they find a different site, we would then substitute that site at that point. But in the meantime of going through the approval process with the court, um, unless it comes up in an, an objection and there's a settlement agreement that changes it, we would have to amend the plan and come back to the, to the town. The town itself has said, this is our plan. We're moving forward with this plan. And I'm not suggesting that in the next six months, you change that plan until you go through the process.
Understood. But again, the question is, when can the town, if they chose to do so, again, I'm speaking generically here, if they decide they want to do three units on Rolling Hill Drive.
After the JOR is issued.
On, on August fifteenth. Somehow we cut a deal and say, hey, could we, could we do a swap?
After the JOR is issued by the court.
And when is that? January one?
We don't know yet.
Well, roughly, what's the order of magnitude?
In probably six months.
Okay, so six months. So then basically for the next six months, we really can't do anything. But then after that time, if something gets identified conceivably, conceptually, we can ask, can we do a swap? Let's make a deal, possibly. Okay. But the time for making that question known to whomever is really January one to what, July one of two thousand twenty-six? So what's the timeframe for that?
I would say the time after you get your JOR, your compliance, uh, approval from the court.
Okay, so basically we, we get it, we get a compliance saying this thing makes sense. Then we have to go back to the court and say, hey, by the way, can we do a swap?
Correct.
Okay, is there anything in our document that we're going to present to the court, whether it's June thirty or whenever, where we can have language in there that says we'd like to come back in a certain timeframe with substitution, so long as we meet all the other criteria? Would having that kind of language in the document help the process at the margin?
No, the, the plan is the plan. You, you can't, you can't provide a menu of options that you would like to try to take advantage of. You, you are basically saying these are the most realistic and these are the most likely, um, mechanisms to, to meet this, to, to meet the obligation. It's not, well, we think this one will be, will meet it, but we're maybe leaving this option open.
I'm, I'm saying, think, I'm saying, we're, we're, we're committing to this, period. We commit to the three, uh, units on Southern Boom. But if we find something else, it's comparable.
It's not, it's, it, there's nothing in the language that we're going to put in our plan that gives that as a, as an option.
Or could you?
No.
You can't.
Not in my opinion, no.
It would be superfluous, in my opinion.
Oh, that's, okay, you still gotta ask. Okay, gotta.
You would still need permission from the court.
Okay, cool, no problem. But, but so, but having it in there, kind of reserving the, not reserving the right, but.
It's not necessary.
Doesn't help. Okay.
No.
All right. But in terms of the, um, practical window, if you think you want to do something differently, whatever that may be, somebody comes up with something over the next three months, some property comes up or whatever it comes out to, then between now and December thirty-one is we hustle around to try and line something up. Then on January three, after the, uh, judgment of compliance has been issued or whatever else, then on January three or January thirteen, two thousand twenty-six, we go back to the judge and say, hey, by the way, we'd like to do a swap. That can be done.
It, it can be done.
They, they may say yes or no, but that's mechanically how it would do it.
That, that seems like, again, we are in new territory. I, I don't know exactly how the mediation process is going to work, but my essential, my assumption is that you can, and, and, and I've done it in the third round where we've gotten our judgment of compliance, we had to amend our plan and get another judgment of compliance, and we amended a settlement agreement, and it took many, many years. So it's not uncommon that that will happen. I just don't know what the process will be necessarily now that we have a program as a mediation arm to it, which is different from the third round.
Understood, but just the idea of giving maximum optionality to the planning board and the committee and the township residents. If we find something else and we want to do a swaperoo, there's a way to do it.
Yeah, I would imagine there's going to be a way to do it, correct. It's, it could be consent order, it could be a new judgment of compliance, it could be a whole host of different pending.
Prolocus, stuff doing good.
The plan, if, if adopted tonight, is based on the data that is available to the board and the committee at this time.
At this point.
If new data arises, I would find it highly unlikely that the court would not allow an amendment so long as you still comply with the Fair House.
Okay, so you got that potential, uh, swap.
I think if you'll recall also, the third round, we went from having a site at River Road to have a site here at the municipal building to having a site at River Road.
But again, the, what's different?
Said, and Fair Share Housing said, that's it, that's it, that's it. And when we found a very attractive, appealing, alternative location, uh, you know, we pursued that. So, and it was better for everybody and the courts were, were very receptive.
So that, that concept still obtains, even though life is different now. Okay. Uh, final question, um, or comment. Tell us about the Mercer County June eleven. That may be legal folks versus planning folks. Uh, Mercer County, June eleventh, how that impacts the planning board's thinking, if at all, and what the relevance is, et cetera.
Are you talking about the order, um, that was issued regarding the directive?
Yes, Judge, I believe it's June eleventh, speaking to the issue of fair share doesn't get to necessarily reviewed or approved, but rather, um, everybody else gets the same, and a couple of other items, but that uh, activity, I'm not sure if the boards, uh, the planning boards are aware of that. Maybe you want to take a moment and explain that and say what.
Yeah, so the Consortium of Local Leaders for Responsible Planning, um, that's those, that, that group of towns who has sued the, the AG, uh, regarding the amended Fair Housing Act. They, um, received, the judge in that matter, um, issued a decision in a written opinion stating that they, they were implying the local leaders for responsible planning were implying that every plan had to be signed off. Um, the way they were interpreting the directive, that every plan had to be signed off by Fair Share Housing. Um, I know that I, I can speak for myself and I, I think, uh, others on this um, meeting as well, that wasn't how most folks, um, interpreted the directive. We didn't, I, I, I did not seek in any of the municipalities that I work in, uh, fair shares uh, comments or fair shares, uh, sign off on the plans. Um, the way that it was framed was that if fair share has objected, which fair share did object in certain, in certain matters, that they were to receive a copy of the plan by virtue of the fact they were noticed on E-quartz. Basically, they would receive a courtesy copy of the plan. If fair share is not, fair share can log on to the directive website today, um, and see copies of any plans which have been filed. It's just so in those ones that they objected to, they get a courtesy copy. Um, the, the court confirmed what a lot of people read as you do not need fair shares sign off on your plans. Does that answer your question?
I think the other.
Yeah, so long as everybody's aware of that.
The other thing that that directive required, um, was that it, the ordinances be adopted when they submit. That was the other thing that the opinion indicated that, that they only have to be in draft form.
Okay, um, and then finally, I've been bellyaching about this for a couple of years. Um, our friends in Chatham Borough for the last six or seven years now have had these meetings on TV with YouTube, able to be seen on the website. The idea of a resident, again, we have a few people showing up. The idea of a resident, again, we have a few people showing up here, um, something of this import, not having this on television is absurd, right? It says nothing to do with you guys, so on the screen or whatever, but I just happen to be here. Uh, we gotta get that straightened out sooner rather than later. Because to say, I gotta go to the town and get a jump drive to be able to get an audio of something that's talking about what's happening in the next 10 years or 20 or 30 years in our town with this board where nobody hear. And the way we have Chatham Borough or what, the Chatham Courier or something here, I have no idea what's going on. Um, I think, again, something like that for sure. And I've got very few bellyaches with you guys, believe me. That's something we gotta get straightened out. Maybe not in this year's budget, but we had it, we don't have the excuse about we're in another room now. We got all the TVs, we got all the metrics, we got this, you know, the gurus who can do this. Whatever the cost is, we gotta be on TV live. And this excuse about, well, if you don't come to the meeting, shame on you is nonsense. We know that, we got senior citizen types, we got people out of town, we got people who have other things to do. We also want a historical record, so I don't have to go into town and get a jump drive and then have somebody say, well, by the way, we can't put that on the website because it's too many gigabytes or megabytes, or whatever kind of bytes it is, is ridiculous. So we have to get that straightened out. And I know if that's a planning board issue that defers to the committee, whether the committee can have a directive, how that works, but one way or the other, this deferential stuff has got to kind of stop. We have to get this on TV for the public to see. Again, my once setter, every five year bellyache with you guys on stuff.
Just for the record, though, this meeting we did, uh, this is being broadcast live.
Then shut my mouth, thank you. Is that gonna be, that superb?
Thank you, Mr. Carr, you can sit down now.
Just this, this specific meeting only because we don't want, you know, this is not dealing with a hearing on an application right now that we, we felt we could do that for this one because of its townwide implications. And it's not specific where we're, we don't want one applicant to feel like they're getting broadcast and the other one isn't. We were able to do it for this one. We put that on the website on the town calendar as well, uh, so this is being broadcast live.
And shame on me, I was given, uh, this, not disinformation, but I was not informed about that. I wrote a letter a couple of month, a couple of weeks ago about, by the way, where is it? I didn't hear back, look knucklehead, look on page three, we're broadcasting, and so shame on me. Is this going to be taped, uh, are going to be put on the website for historical reference, the YouTube?
Uh, I think, I believe we can do that.
Let's make a point to do that, because that, again, is terrific information, okay? But anyway, going forward still, irrespective of the fact that it maybe is one person, having these on TV on an ongoing basis, I think would be a terrific, uh, service for the town.
Yeah, we, we debated that just in the past on the planning board.
Right.
I mean, you know, the question you have to ask is, the township committee talked about this. I, I don't know how many people showed up or how many people logged on to discuss it. But it is a township-wide event, and of course township meetings are township-wide events. Thus, the, the, the conversation we had that, yes, this should be open and broadcast. And I agree with you on, on something of this nature and magnitude, it should be available to the townwide. You know, we don't have to go into it tonight, but from a planning board perspective, I would disagree in terms of the planning board needing to be open to everyone in town for the public at every meeting. But we could, we can, you know, I don't want, I don't want to debate that tonight.
But at some point, I'd like to debate it.
Yeah, sure.
But, but again, is that ultimately a committee decision or?
That is a planning board decision.
Okay, so we gotta get that straightened out, one way or the other. That irrespective, again, of the fact that maybe only two people show up or there's only one committee thing, having the planning board activities is a townwide interest item. Because if some zoning thing or some variance thing or some whatever thing is happening in one part of town to the Green Village slash River Road, whatever paradigm, everybody should be, have access to that information. Say, come in and get a jump drive.
They do.
But by showing up at the meeting. Right, I'm saying that people don't have time necessarily or can't get there, maybe out of town. And the idea of having that on tape in order to get it, instead of saying, come get a jump drive of an audio, it'll take you five hours to go through, and we can't even put the jump drive on the website because it's too much.
That's a technology problem, uh, but, you know, that's not, that's a different issue.
But, but the point is, one way or the other, this information has to be in the public, so let's get that straightened out.
Well, it is in the public, but.
I'm sorry, in the public?
Yeah.
For public dissemination easily on the website, not you gotta go get a jump drive if you missed the meeting. Let's get that straightened out.
Sure.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
I realize that's not the topic for tonight, but I would definitely support broadcasting the planning board meetings. I don't know if we get the point in the end, at some point.
We, we, we do have these usually at the beginning of the year in the reorg type meetings, um, to discuss that, those types of things. I, I would just say, and I've said this before, this board, I, I think this is a great board, I really do. If you, if you were to come to the meetings and you would, maybe you caught a little bit of it tonight, the openness and the willingness and the questions and the directness and the thoughtful process and the open dialogue with the applicant, not someone who lives half across town, is a curiosity seeker, is just going to weigh in and tie down. You know, we don't have an obligation to really speak up here. We could listen and we could vote. But I think by, by having that opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves is one of the reasons why I think the planning boards don't necessarily need to be broadcast live. It's the applicant and those around who have been notified. There's a reason why we only notify those around the, we don't notify the, the entire town for every, every decision we make here, uh, because it is very specific to that street, community, neighborhood. Yes, there are things that are worthy of the entire town being aware of. But I, my fear is that you take away some of that dialogue here. You take away some of that openness, because somebody across town just wants to be a muckraker and, and maybe impugn you for questions or things you ask.
Well, that muckraker could still come to the meeting and do the same thing.
Yep.
But my point with that, though, is that we need to get it straightened out. It's important to have people have the ability to come here and do their voicing and do their hearing. And again, the other thing, and I promise, the other thing too, just, I'm sitting up here for 15 minutes, you guys haven't treated me out once, so I understand that. But that is, again.
We are getting off topic.
I'm here, I apologize. But the point is, my concern, again, is not with you rascals up here now. My concern is with some people showing up who don't have this openness and willingness to let me just babble on for 15 minutes. Okay, there are other jurisdictions who some people know about, where there's not quite that latitude.
I can assure you, you would have been limited to three minutes tonight if we had an ongoing open meeting.
Point taken, so agreed. But my point again is that I'm not interested in the people, I'm interested in the institution. And you people happen to be incredibly compliant. There could be another crowd that isn't. And that's why, again, the idea of having the open thing and let the muckraker show up, I'd rather take that risk than say you have to show up to the meeting to find out what's going on. Because there are things that are just in this jurisdiction or this area that do have impact across town.
Yeah.
And therefore do that. Anyway, sorry to get off topic, thank you again for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carr.
Oh, go ahead.
I know it's not about this.
No. Just, I can't ask another question before we go to the public. So, there's, um, about a prior comment made from the public, uh, before about the specific language in the resolution and the overlay zoning. Procedurally, uh, at what point, if we wanted to make changes or advise the changes to that, whether it's how much retail or other elements, like, when can and how do we do that?
So it's a draft right now. My, my sense is this is our first attempt at it. As we go through, in my opinion, the next couple of months, I think we can tweak this a little bit more. As long as we don't change the, um, main components, the density, we don't take it from 10 units to six units or, you know, we do something that is, um, that would harm the ordinance. If we want to tweak it and put design standards in it, add setback requirements that are different, I, I think, I think as long as it still makes sense, we're, we can do it at any point. We, the adoption of the ordinance has to occur by March of 2026. So I would say from now until January, most likely. And we could probably do introduction February and adoption in March, so we have some time.
Yeah, no, I wanted, I wanted to say something very similar. Does that then require another ordinance from the planning board to make a resolution at the township committee? So do we have to go, if, if we want to do what, what Matt just described, do we have to go through this whole process again in order to something like?
Could you just clarify, like, again, both with M L U L plan, what would the process look like for the introduction of these ordinances?
Yeah.
The back and forth between the board and the township committee?
I, I think the town, we would, we being collectively, we could look at the ordinance and I can receive comments from everybody and say, we, we should add this, this and this. It doesn't get, it gets introduced by the, the governing body. So the ordinance, we won't have to go back through this process again, but the process for an, uh, adoption of an ordinance is that it gets introduced by the governing body. You see it for consistency review with the master plan, with the housing element in fair share plan, indicate that it's consistent, and then goes back for adoption. Um, and so we don't have to necessarily update the planning, the fair share plan. We would just go through the ordinance adoption process.
The basic normal process that we would use for any.
Or any other ordinance, yep.
Yeah, we're, we're adopting the, but hopefully adopting the plan today. And then the implementation ordinances will just follow any other typical zoning, uh, ordinances that, in that process.
Correct.
With that back and forth as we normally do.
Uh, there are other members of the public, Mr. Carr, if anyone else would like to speak before you come up, back up. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Mark, yeah, Mark Lois Gates Avenue.
Sir, from the testimony you've given part of the board with all the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
What was your name again, sir?
Mark Lois Gates Avenue.
You spell your last name?
L O I S. If you'd been around town, uh, you'd see my name on hundreds of billboard, hundreds of yard signs. I, I think the whole town knows how to spell my name just because of that, um, but.
Just doing my job.
You are doing a good job too, sir. Thank you for being here, and I appreciate the volunteers on this board, um, and a lot of the discussion tonight. I was listening tonight, I just, I, if, if this, uh, I would like to just offer this kind of recap. It seemed like in the beginning, um, you know, we talked, uh, quite a bit about the individual, uh, property at, you know, that, that, where we, we have to comply for our R D P. And then it really shifted to the bulk of tonight, talking about the overlay zone. And with the overlay zone, um, there's a lot of factors there. But I think the, the, the first questions that I heard from the board really had to do with the idea of, hey, is, is there, um, are there special rules for affordable housing and do they get treated differently? And I, I heard that prodded and poked in a couple of ways. And it's, it seemed to me the testimony was, well, no, no, that's not the case. And then we explored a whole bunch of ways where actually, you know, whether it be, oh, the parking gets relaxed a little bit or, um, I, I know personally, I, I know that the impervious coverage for 522 was, there, there's some special rules about being underneath 50% of coverage, and then therefore you don't have to comply, comply with a recharge component. And then, um, you know, loans and trusts for, for the part of the, you know, that we actually have to build, maybe those are a little bit of a, a relaxation. And then those are sort of like the de jour kind of relaxations. And then, um, beyond the de jour relaxations, there's the de facto relaxations that happen. So we talked a little bit, there's a little exploration of the environmental commission. Don't really weigh in. I mean, 522, there wasn't a letter written. 522 has, uh, Southern Brawler has wetlands. It had, uh, endangered species on the property. Um, and then you had that, that impervious coverage issue. It pretty much, I, I don't know that much about the, the topic, but it seems like that kind of runs the gamut of environmental issues. Uh, there's certainly trees that came down. Um, so there, there's a whole bunch of ways that, um, de facto, that rules get relaxed. If you look at cornerstone right now, 522, you see a huge sign that's way outside of our ordinances that says 522. And it's on the curb and it's, it's, you know, it's way outside our, our zoning. Application completeness. So by the, by the idea that you're going to put down this overlay zone, it, it sort of, it sidesteps a little portion of the application completeness. Now, the footprint and the engineering has to be worked out, the hydrology has to be worked out, but there's some implicit nods that you wouldn't get if you were bringing an application to this, to this board otherwise, or going to, to the zoning board. Uh, you, you get a little bit of a sense, as if you were a developer, you get a sense of what you can do and what you can't do, and there's a little wind at your back, if you will. So I, I think that, um, that from the testimony I heard here, there is quite a few ways, both de jour and de facto, that there is a relaxation towards, um, these type of applications. And I'm not really here to comment on the, you know, the fairness of that or, or what I would call kind of like the creep of that, but how, how that creeps into the application. I'm not really here to comment on that, but I think as, um, mature people that have to make a decision, you have to deal with what is. And what is, is the fact that there is sort of this, uh, relaxation that happens. And, um, we've seen it before where, yeah, it's, it's three stories is the limit. But then there's this elevator shaft and there's this other thing and, hey, there's a spire and then, hey, we need, so it becomes, well, it's really three and a half and you can add a dormer, you can have a window, but you can't have living space, and it gets a little taller. Now, where, where this comes in, I think, really is the ratio and the multiplier. So we talked a lot about, or it seems like the plan has identified area and you have identified what seems to be, um, a pretty reasonable plan overall. But what I wonder about is this ratio and this multiplier, where this came from. Because when I look at 522, I look at it, it, that from my memory, three acres, three and a half acres and 65 units. I'm not great at math, but that's certainly more than 10 units per acre. Now, part of this plan has the parcel right next to it. That's the gas station, it's right next to it. I'm not sure how this board's going to, you know, talking about this creep, talking about how things change. I'm not sure how this board's going to feel when the rules that you set up potentially, you know, immediately get expanded by who, whoever might decide to develop that, the gas station in the property immediately next to 522, goes from 10 units per acre and says, you know what, I'm taking this to the zoning board because this is right next to me, connecting parcel, it's 20 units per acre or more. So why, why am I limited to 10? So what I'd like to, to really hear is a, is a robust discussion of, about this 10 units per acre, where that came from, how that's determined. Because what, what that seems to me, as a resident of this town and somebody who's interested in, you know, it's sort of the traffic and whatever that's going to come from that density there, at the 17 acres, at 10 units per acre, I would put it forth to you that you're not going to really be able to control the creep of the what, of the density that really comes there. And we've talked about that in many different ways, about the rules, as they get relaxed into that 17 acres. So I don't think you really have control over that coefficient, that, that multiplier, that ratio. But it seems to me we do have better, much better control over the overlay zone itself. What gets overlaid, not necessarily how. I'll give you one example. There are planning board members from another town in this audience, listening, and they, you know, good, good for that town, they're very smart. They, they'll put, uh, properties right on their border. And they didn't do it at 10 units an acre or 20 units an acre, they did it at 100 units per acre. And now they've gone ahead and, and decided that the rest of the same area that's going to, that borders our, our town and that severely impacts folks on River Road, they decided that's going to be zoned at 35 units per acre. But how, you tell me, how are they going to control that 35 units per acre and not get the 100 units per acre that they've already built on the Ivy? And you're, you're facing that same sort of decision here, okay? Those planning board members didn't give a hoot about our town and didn't care to consult with us, and I don't think they really thought that thing through. So I'm asking you to please think that through. And my question is, where did this 10 units per acre come from? And how, how is that calculated, given the fact that 522 is 20 or more?
So I'm sorry, what are you, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're suggesting. So you're saying in order to meet 170 units of overlay zone, that instead we should have suggested 20 units, 20, the density of 20 units per acre because the Charlie Brown site has 20 units per acre, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the, the coefficient there, I mean, you could go with 15, you could go with 17. You could pick the very best parcels that we think really work, come up with coefficient that we think works for that. You'd be smart about it. Pick it in some way that makes some kind of sense, not, not willy nilly from the air because we, we're, we're potentially liable for that 20 units. We don't want to make the same mistakes as Chatham Borough.
So I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand what you're suggesting. So 20, so you're saying instead of 170 units distributed over 17 acres, that it should be 20 times, you know, 180, I guess, nine acres at 20 units an acre?
That's a, that's a potential formula, but you know, I'm, I, we could, you know, we could do, uh, multivariate math here. We don't, we, we could go a little more acreage, a little less, a, you know, a, a little, uh, less of a coefficient. It could be 17, it could be 16. I want, my question is very specific, you know? How was this ratio, this coefficient calculated? That's the question. Now, the, you're, the implication, you've got it exactly. You've got it exactly, that's the implication, absolutely. We can control what we zone, but you can't really control what gets built. And we've just seen that from many, many different rules being relaxed. So you need to, you, you need to think through that. So my question still stands, where did the coefficient come from?
So I think everybody's aware that in order to meet the requirement of the unmet need of the 30 So I think everybody's aware that in order to meet the requirement of the unmet need of the thirty-five units, we looked at this area and it was seventeen acres. And in order to hit a hundred and seventy units to get the twenty percent set aside, the math is ten units an acre. That's how we get to a hundred and seventy units. So, let me just finish. So the thought process behind it is, we didn't just pick it out of the air. It works out because it's a mathematical equation. If we start, what, what my sense is of how overlay zones work with my experience is that if we start high, we have nowhere to go if somebody objects to it. So if we start at twenty units an acre as a, as a proposed density, somebody comes in and in five years it doesn't develop, they want thirty units an acre. So I'd rather start at a multifamily density at ten or twelve units an acre, which is pretty reasonable. And if we have to move it slightly, we can move it slightly at some other point. But that's the whole reason for where we start with. And to answer your question about not having control, zoning is control. You zone for what you are, you are allowing for a particular density with certain setbacks at certain heights. And that's what's permitted. If somebody wants to ask for some deviation from that, they would go to the zoning board if they want a higher density. That, that would be, that's any property. It doesn't have to do just with inclusionary zoning. So that's any property in the township, somebody can ask for that, that difference or that, that variance for density. But we didn't just pick it out of the air. With regards to the hundred percent site, that's a hundred percent affordable housing. That's not necessarily a density that's created from an overlay district or from an inclusionary district. All hundred, excuse me, all of those units are a hundred percent affordable housing. So nobody's going to look at that density as a, as a developer and say, we want that density. That, that's purely for affordable housing to have had a curve on that property.
Are you familiar with the Ivy in Chatham Borough, what the density was?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty to sixty-five, I forget the exact.
Acre. So is the suggestion that we should be building something like the Ivy on a smaller plot? Take three acres and build the Ivy? Is that the suggestion?
No, my, my question was about the coefficient and the maximum ratio and the ratio of what was built in this town. I specifically said the Ivy is a mistake. The planning board that put that together made a giant mistake and put a blight on our community. And something in what, in Chatham Township specifically, the River Road folks in that community are severely impacted by it. And there will be the fallout from what's to come from the planning board's mistakes down there is, you know, pretty egregious.
But, but to that point, the higher the density per acre, the more that you encourage that kind of development. So going to the,
Yeah, but the issue is not.
And the more exposing it is. So that's, I'm just responding to your question about why the ten. I think the, the response from the expert is that is a reasonable to keep it within this three-story standard without.
But then this, so then, but then that, that would carry then that this, that this planning board then approved the twenty in this breaker and it wasn't reasonable.
In whatever, well, whatever the third round, you know, designations were, all we can speak to is what's going on in the fourth round and what is before us, not what was behind us.
I, I think, I think what you're getting at, it's kind of what I got at a little bit earlier. You know, the, what is, we know what we're doing, we know what we're going to propose. But what is the reality? What is the reality inside the courts? And what is the reality? It's like what I've always said about height ordinances, right? And I, I think you kind of raised a fair point, you know? If we go to forty-five, you know, and we accomplish something, but somebody next door wants to do the same, well, we have zoning rules for that, yeah. But if I go to court and say, well, they did it next door, you know, and you're going to preclude me doing it.
You can speak to this. Every lot stands on its own.
I understand that, but the reality, the reality, we have to live where.
I don't want to be disrespectful. I'm going to sit down though.
If you, as long as you've made all your points, I'm sorry. We're kind of, but, but, but we end up living in, you know, what is the reality of, of?
I mean, do I think it's reasonable? I think it's reasonable. I think.
What is the reality of someone actually coming and saying, I want to do this, but ten doesn't work? You know, we've seen density as high as thirty-five across the state.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I can't speak to the reality of it. Do I think that somebody would take the opportunity to build a ten units an acre? Maybe if, if the financials work for them right now. What's the reality that somebody's going to come back and say, we want something higher? I, I can't answer that. I don't have a crystal ball.
I think the key distinction is, look at five twenty-two Southern Boulevard. You have to look at the, at the moment circumstances or constraints with, under which that application was reviewed and, and approved. It was a three-plus acre site, the, the need was sixty-plus units. That's what it was approved for. The distinction here is we are not relegated to a modest sized lot. We are overlaying for a relatively speaking significantly larger lot with lower density. So the suggestion, I guess the, a scenario is would gee, what if developer comes arguing not, well, go pound salt with the ten units per acre, I want to do thirty. If, if it gets to litigation, the defense strategy, part of the defense strategy is there is real merit to the plan and in the event there's a denial, the argument is where there's legitimate basis for the ten unit per acre in order to satisfy affordable housing because we are overlaying a much larger piece of parcels, parcels for, to satisfy that mandate. Right? So the counterfactual is this. If, if we were to say, well gee, we're going to overlay one point five acres and someone says, well gee, then, and, and we say, I don't know, whatever, seventy units per acre, that go pound salt, I want a hundred ten, I'm going to build a thirty-two foot story tower because you did not provide adequate measures to satisfy your, your affordable housing because you're only overlaying one point five acres. So that's the extreme example. So I think the strategy of saying, gee, here is a reasonably sized parcels of land with controlled modest density as opposed to, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine stories, hundreds of units per acre. We are providing a credible and defensible plan to satisfy affordable housing for the fourth round by setting aside seventeen acres at ten units an acre. And that's, and that ultimately in, in courts, I think is what's defensible. So to your point, every application depends on its circumstances and its merit. So you, you can't necessarily say, well gee, you know, five twenty-two Southern's got what it was, twenty-five substantially higher than ten units per acre. In, in terms of municipal land use, well, that, that is, that, that's, you know, apples and oranges. You, you can't really look at that when you're looking at.
Correct. I totally agree.
You know, you know, the P one zone and say, well gee, you got twenty-five here, why can't I use ten? Because that's what it's owned for and here's, here are the basis for zoning it that way. Then part and parcel of a larger, broader strategy for affordable housing, that by the way is credible and meets all the standards set by the state. So.
And, and there's a huge distinction. That's a hundred percent affordable housing project. It's, it is not, it is something that had to be at that density in order to get financing. You wouldn't have done it at a ten unit per acre because you, they would never have gotten financing for it. They went for low income tax credits. Low income tax credits, the sweet spot is sixty-five units. So I, I don't have any concern that somebody's going to look at that property and say, it's twenty units over there. I want ten, I want twenty over here. I, I don't have any concern with that. So I, I agree with everything you just said. We, the, not only do we have the opportunity to do the correct type of zoning for it, but we're doing in such a way that we've actually met the Fair Housing Act. Like that's the defense for it. We've met the requirement of what the unmet need requires us to, to look at as far as the zoning is concerned. So we've met that twenty-five percent.
So, so, I, I have a hypothetical around that. Of course, this is all, a lot of it's hypothetical. But let's say six, seven years ago, right? It's twenty, you know, let's say it's twenty thirty-two. Nothing has been done. Now I, something pops up. Don't I have a strong argument to say, listen, doesn't look, you know, so and so just renovated, they're not doing anything, doesn't look like anyone's doing anything. I'm going to help you guys out and I want to exceed the ten.
Yeah, it's possible. Somebody comes in, they want you to change the ordinance and increase.
But this is, this is, I guess this is, this is what I'm kind of talking about. The reality of it is, is that thirty-five is kind of a standard.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
You don't agree with?
No, I do not agree that thirty-five units.
What is the standard?
I think it depends on where it is in a town. There's some towns that have six units per acre. That's always been the presumptive density. That's for single family homes, attached homes. I think eight to ten to twelve is, is, is kind of suburban multifamily. I think you get into downtowns and you're at thirty-five units an acre near transit stops, thirty-five units an acre. But I do not believe that that's a standard across all New Jersey. I think it definitely depends on location.
Okay. If I may, and I, I have a couple of different thoughts and I'll, I'll be brief. To something that we brought up with both discussions. Kevin, Mr. Sullivan was on this, you know, when he spoke about the gas stations, which he spoke about the last time we discussed this. And, you know, there's, Mr. Lowe's brings up a great point. You know, I'm, I, I also am of the volition that, you know, once, once the doors open, anything can happen and we do wind up with the Ivy right up there in what is perceived as a downtown. I don't particularly perceive it as a downtown. But did we look at maybe eliminating some of the properties there like the gas stations, maybe something else and increasing the density, you know, what would that do to twelve point five or whatever the math might work out to be? So that we can preserve some of the infrastructure and the integrity up there.
The Affordable Housing Committee did come back after Planning Board, we had our meeting in, in April and we looked at that as an option and still felt that the number of parcels and the area is sufficient and wanting to keep that density at that ten units an acre was important.
So we didn't consider the infrastructure, the, as far as gas stations and having, having well-rounded, you know, town.
Again, an overlay zone is an option. Nobody's saying that the gas station's going away. If, if they choose to, to develop and, sorry, if they choose to stay as a gas station, they stay as a gas station. If they choose to want to develop at ten units an acre, they have that as an option, but we're not saying they're going to go away.
That's true. And then, but to talk in a reality-based way, as, as Kevin was saying, you're creating the opportunity for them to do such, you're, you're giving them, you know, all those businesses up there. I'm not just going to limit it to the gas station. A, a much broader possibility of, of potential and investment. Okay? If the gas stations were eliminated from that and you did have, you know, and, and you did increase slightly because those are small parcels. So I couldn't imagine that it would be more than, you know, twelve units per acre, possibly thirteen at the, at the broadest sense. Then you're taking away that incentive of, you know, of, of eliminating some of that crucial infrastructure, you know, that the town needs. You know, quite frankly, I mean, you know, to have the only gas station all the way out, you know, in our beloved Green Village, you know, it, that, that doesn't help the, the rest of the town. And it doesn't give us a, as you say, you want to create a downtown, that doesn't give us a well-rounded downtown.
I guess I would just take a minute to remind the planning board, the third round, we have a hundred and fifty-seven units of unmet need. And part of the way we addressed that was with an overlay zone on that corporate park.
Right.
For twelve units per acre. Thank you. Yes, very much comments. And that didn't budge. You know, that, nobody came along and they could have forced through twenty units at, at an acre. They could have said, you know, we can't make it viable, but we want to purchase it. Nobody came along and, and said that. So, you know, we have a case in.
It's all, it's a lot hypothetical.
That truly is.
You don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
You don't know. Yeah, I, I, yeah. So you have to think that, you have to go to the extreme, to the worst case.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of.
So what's, what's the next step if, if we don't all, uh, sign off on this and say, okay, we're not in agreement with? Or we can make an amendment tonight. That's, I mean, the, the, the last, you know, the point of the outline back in April was to kind of get that feedback, the subcommittee digested. And by the end of the day, this board here can just like with anything else, make an amendment and choose to adopt that amendment if the majority is there or not and take a vote finally on it.
I just feel that the, and, and it's.
But we got to get through public comment first.
Yeah.
There's still more public comment.
Go ahead, Nick. Go, no, go.
No, I think just generally, you have to do that.
Go ahead, we will. We will. He's just got to follow up. Go ahead. All right.
In terms of, let's make a deal again. We come up with a scenario of a couple of inclusionary developments. Okay, say eight, nine units or whatever, they have one or two affordable to go with it. And we say we want to use these three units and overlay them, or not overlay them, but incorporate that in, into those inclusionary developments. And then the town says they're going to put some money into it to help the developer put that together. Is that kind of substitution viable?
I, I don't think I followed you. So, so if, if you are offering three units above and beyond the overlay zone?
No, we have three units required at the, at the skate park.
Right.
We now have a new development over here that somebody comes in and says, hey, we're going to do fifteen units. And with that, we got to do three units of affordable.
That goes to the unmet need from the third round.
Understood. I'm talking about a, a new transaction now. It would be unmet need fine. But then instead of doing three, we entice them to do six.
Okay.
Okay? Would that incremental three that we would help subsidize in some way, would that three be counted as substitutes for the skate park?
Possibly. Depends on the, the, the details of what that is. I'm not, I, it's possible. I, I just don't know.
Well, very specifically, if the requirement is say twenty percent or fifteen percent, whatever.
No, no, I, I, I'm not following you. I'm not, why would the town overdo another inclusionary zone somewhere?
Somewhere, somebody in the existing zoning is able to develop.
Now, so the existing zoning, any, the mandatory set aside ordinance that you have in place now, that would, that somebody comes in and gets a use variance and they can do a density of, where six, six units per acre is permitted and they come in and they do twelve units per acre.
Right.
That, that amount of affordable housing that they get, that are, they are required to set aside goes to the third round unmet need. Because that's a third round mechanism. That's a third round mandatory set aside ordinance. So anything that happens in town that like that is all goes to all the, the past unmet need. It would not go to the future. However, if, if part of that is some kind of deal that you make with that developer and you, they are going to do additional affordable housing units and they're going to subsidize, that's a possibility. I'm not going to suggest that it's not. But I, I can't just say that yes, it will cover the RDP when I don't even know.
No, point taken. But what I'm saying is if you had the fifteen, I'm thinking a little bit about the, um, Dixie Dale. We're basically at fifty-three units and you got twenty-four on Southern Boulevard. That's more than fifteen percent, more than twenty percent. Okay? Just the conceptual that if you have an inclusionary development and they're required to put in fifteen, twenty percent, whatever it is, that may go to the unmet need. But if you put in incremental units over and above the requirement, that will be one to one.
It's possible. Conceptually, it's possible. Anything's possible. Conceptually, the devil's in the details with things like that.
In terms of the numbers, because they're fungible numbers in terms of what we're required, if it's over and above what the requirement is.
Requirement is.
Then that would count to the RDP for the fourth round.
It's possible. It also could create additional RDP. It, it, it is such a complicated question and it's, and it's so hypothetical that I don't want to give an answer because I just don't have enough factual basis to give you an answer. Anything's possible as long as it meets the regulations in the Fair Housing Act.
Okay, working it. Okay. Um, the final question is, back to this issue of taking back the, um, uh, what's his name? Overlay zone scenario. Okay? Um, right now we have an overlay zone, so that's going to go in perpetuity for Mr. Shahadi a minute ago. Okay? If we are able somehow again, this goofy idea of saying, let's do our thirty-seven units with a hundred percent and then we can pull back the overlay, would that give us an optionality ten years from now? We say, okay, we got to find an overlay for the new round. We can then use that. Does that preserve optionality? Because once we have that overlay zone now, we can't then use that in two thousand thirty-five. Because to your point, it's there, good to go. We got to find some other place for an overlay potentially.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, you get the same result that you get, but if we're able to pull that back, we then have that optionality potentially if we can address it with this other way. So that's one of the other reasons for if you can do something like a market to affordable or find another site, that conceptually, conceivably, you could pull back that overlay and use that as optionality in two thousand thirty-five. Potentially, and that way you have more ability to overlay fewer square feet in town or fewer square, fewer acres in town, et cetera. Is that conceptually something that could happen?
Again, I'm going to answer that, that these are all hypotheticals and until I understand the details, if it meets the Fair Housing Act, if it meets the, the regulations that are in place at the time, we would talk about it.
Yeah, but the way to do that though is to go through you and just mechanically work through some of those scenarios and see what you thought would be the, your reception, receptivity at the state level or at the court level.
I think anything is possible, subject to the adjudication of the, the bodies that are governing this. I mean, you know, it's a process.
All right. Again, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Kelly?
Very quickly, I heard everybody talking about the density and, and, uh, and then there was the, the comment about the opportunity. and then there was the, the comment about the opportunity to make an amendment to what we have here tonight. And what strikes me is that the higher we make the density, the more attractive we make it for somebody to redevelop that property. And then that seems to conflict with the sentiment that's been expressed by a number of people that we really want to preserve the gas stations. We, we don't want to drive out the supermarket. The Ace Hardware is a valuable resource for the township. So that I would, I would raise that as a concern of raising the density above the existing proposal.
It's a double edged sword. I think you're right. Yeah. Thank you. We are up against a deadline. So, uh, there was comment about amending. Yeah, just in general. I know. I know. I know. But I just would like to get the, uh, the attorney's take on if we were to make an amendment tonight, or if there was a request to make an amendment, you know, how, how is that? How do we play that out this evening? Or if we can play this out, given the deadline that we're up against?
I, I think it's going to depend on the type of amendment. If it's a huge wholesale amendment, we've noticed this plan, it's been on file, it's been sent to the EPA and the county planning board. Um, if we're going to make them, and Kendra can weigh in as well. If this is going to be a substantial edit, that's one thing. But if it's going to be something where we're revising details, not so much the meat of the plan, that, that would be permissible.
Chairman, do you have a throwback idea on spending?
No, we don't. I'm just, I'm just trying to get that out upfront before we start talking about closing out things here. Please.
I mean, and, and I, and the, you know, if you're looking at the skate park, for example, um, something that Kendra touched on earlier is an RDP site. It needs to be something, it, it needs to be something that we can develop in the next 18 to 24 months. It needs to be something that the township is in control of right now. Um, we can't go out and say, oh, we're going to purchase land. We have to already have the land. So when we looked at all of the options in town for what we could use to satisfy our RDP, there weren't that many. Um, and it would take more, I, I think if we're considering changing that spot or changing the overlay zone, I think it would take, um, we'd have to go back and do more research to find other alternatives to these sites that are there now.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I, I mean, I agree. I think, I think if you're going to change the boundaries of the overlay zone or switch property designations, you know, that's, sounds pretty close to me of a substantive change that would require renotice, et cetera. And we're, you know, not, we don't have time. I mean, I, I think, I don't want to force the board's hand, but my advice to the board is that a decision should be rendered tonight such that we can comply with the deadline. We already know that the Builders Association did object to the number, the reduction in the number, of course. So they're looming. Uh, and you've heard plenty of testimony tonight about how important the immunity from builders remedy suits is as part of this process.
So I, I have a quick question.
Please.
Um, you mentioned that we actually have the option to define design standards.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go into a little bit what, what that, what that is? What, what would be included in those?
Those are things like architectural requirements, um, street trees, landscaping, buffering, that type of thing.
So we would have the opportunity after tonight, if we ratified, to kind of dig into that, kind of add some of that to make sure that we don't get some crazy development. Get something that's actually nice.
Is that something?
Rather than a huge part.
I, I, I mean, I think that's fantastic. Um, but is that something that you undertake now? Or is that something you would undertake when someone comes forward?
No, you, you can do, we can do that now. Those are, those are, those are details.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are details of the ordinance and we can work as a subcommittee to say, okay, what do we want to add to it? I mean, it's the, the draft ordinance is the meat and potatoes. Setbacks, density, impervious coverage, that type of thing. The, the, the prettying up of the, the aesthetics is something we can always add to it.
It's the community side.
Yeah. Yeah. Correct.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you. Uh, any, um, anyone else from the public? If hearing no one else from the public, I'm going to close out the public portion of this hearing. Thank you all for, for contributing. Um, and I'm just gonna, you know, as you know, where we are, like so much of affordable housing under the gun. Um, uh, so I would just like to hear from the, the board, if there's some kind of sense, um, if there is anyone who would like to discuss that amending process, if there is any, I, I've shared my concerns, but, but, uh.
I just have one.
Please.
Just have a thought, listening to all of this and, you know, without diminishing what the committee and the council has done, because their hands are tied. I just don't think this whole process is fair to be thrown on, on us and these constraints. The state should do a better job to come up, I mean, it's a 10 year plan. I don't want to leave my town in 10 years. I don't know where I'll be in a worse condition than what was given to me. I'm a little concerned about that, being able to vote on something because it's the best option of the worst options at the time. So, you know, that's my conscience and, um, not saying that this is not, I'm all about affordable housing. I just think that making this big investment in, in what, 60 days, 30 days, how much do we have? Doesn't make sense. And then the builders have so much, so much power to just come and sue towns. This whole process does not make sense to me. That being said, I don't feel comfortable voting for something that doesn't make sense to me.
I'm, I'm laughing because I totally understand. I'm sorry.
I agree on it not making sense.
No, right. That, that's what I said, without diminishing, because you guys' heads are tied as well.
Yeah. The condensed, uh, calendar was, it was a killer. And plus, you know, the, the amount of time you have to challenge things, other potential, it was just a nightmare.
So then what's next? I mean, do we keep saying yes, 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 if we don't have the options? In 10 years, maybe earlier, we'll have the same problems because no one's saying no. I mean, there's towns that have said no, but, um, I don't know what other options we have as, as, as a town. If you run out of space, if you have no other space and this is the only viable option and it doesn't get built, then we're just kicking the bucket.
Yeah. I mean, I, my interest is in protecting, you know, the, the town from builders remedy lawsuits. Yeah. While providing a realistic development potential for something that looks in keeping with the community. And going back to the 10 units, I was comfortable with that because we're talking about two to three stories, which is similar to what's over it.
Yeah.
You know, the nearby, um, Crystal Properties, which is the, the office properties that are nearby. So it's in, it's in keeping with the community. So you're trying to balance a whole bunch of challenging and that's really where it's coming from. So at the end of the day, I mean, my plan is to approve because I want to make sure we're not in a builder's remedy lawsuit. We do have 10 years to try and figure out how to, you know, advocate at the state level to figure out what the next round looks like. I mean, to, to go into this process after the last process and have four RDP, really three that we have to build, that was, you know.
Yeah.
We were very fortunate in that sense.
Yeah. My, my commentary on this is I, I completely agree. It's, it's crazy to have to go through this in such a condensed timeframe. But that, those are the rules unfortunately of the game that we've been, we've been dealt here. I, I must say, like, when we first saw this in April, it just popped up, you know, given how, um, tense it was for round three and what we had to go through, I was prepared for something like that. But seeing the plan, I really commend everybody who is on the Affordable Housing Committee, you know, to go through what you had to go through to come up with this, which again, never perfect, not perfect, but made a lot of logical sense to at least conform to the crazy rules that we've had to, to abide by in order to protect our town from building remedy. So to me, this plan makes as much sense as, as it can, given a tight timeframe, given the rules of the road, um, so to speak. Uh, I'm, I'm supportive of it, you know, with the timeframe we have. And I would caution others not to, you know, for, for not looking for, not, for lack of having perfection, which we'll never have in any of this stuff. I would caution others to, you know, uh, you know, not, not let that take over, uh, you know, finding perfection to then open us up to, uh, bigger issues that, and losing control of our zoning.
What else? Comments? Questions? Comments? Thoughts? Please.
Yeah. Uh, I, I think there are, there were a, a handful of ways to slice and dice, um, the, the, coming up with an approach to satisfy the obligation. Um, and I think in reference to, uh, one of the residents' comments, you can either, uh, set up a big square surface, surface area, um, and, and go theoretically shallow, you know, shallow or very short in terms of height. Or you can go with a smaller surface area and go more vertical. Um, I think at the end of the day, regardless of the strategy, um, there are some guidelines, guardrails you can employ. But the, the matter is, is always subject to interpretation and circumstances at the time you have an applicant before, uh, a body that's going to, uh, rule on that application. Um, so the reality is you, you can have some semblance of control, but at the end of the day, um, it is up to the body who's reviewing the application and the circumstance under which the application is being reviewed. Uh, there are some elements you can put in place, um, to, uh, to at least be able to forecast what may or may not get developed there. Again, this is a plan that, it's not to say everything that's being proposed is going to happen within 10 years. Uh, the RDP portion is yes, that, that is a commitment, a bona fide commitment. Uh, the balance of it is, is providing a, a reasonable pathway should the opportunity present itself before the, uh, the zoning board or whatever board it's going to be that's reviewing the application. Um, having said that, you know, I understand there are municipalities with higher densities. Uh, there are municipalities, you're doing it through municipally sponsored, uh, programs. Uh, and there's sort of a mixture of the two and other elements that are being employed. Um, I, I find, you know, I, based on the options that were, availed themselves to us, uh, it was my position that this afforded a pathway for the township to do something that I think has some semblance of maintaining what we're going to have there. A big advantage to the plan that's before us is, is this. Um, we often talk about this board and other boards often talk about stormwater management. Uh, it is a persistent and, and ongoing challenge that the township has with virtually every application that comes before us. Um, what we have here is, is a development potential on what is already developed property. It is near virtually 100% impervious coverage. So we're not, we're, we're not raising forests, we're not chopping down trees, we're not going into environmentally sensitive areas to satisfy what is a potentially a, you know, it's a meaningfully sizable obligation. It, it, it is already a retail, um, commerce, area of commerce. Uh, it's, it's macadam. Um, there are hard surfaces everywhere. Uh, and I think that is a, that is an inherent advantage to one of the many variables that went into this, uh, this pot of, 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 of equation for figuring out what would be, uh, desirable, amenable and realistic and appropriate. Um, a, a, a secondary element is there is already shuttle service there. So there is the semblance of infrastructure is already there in place. Um, you've got the retail component, which ultimately, you know, many arguments can be made synergistic to what would ultimately be a, a multi-use development project there. So, uh, you know, at the end of the day, um, it, it, it would be, it continues to be my thought. And I've certainly heard, uh, the comments from residents and from other members of the board. Uh, there is going to be, um, ultimately some dissenting opinions, some concerns. Uh, and, and I do respect that, all those opinions and concerns. Um, at, at the end of the day, um, it, it is a plan that provides a pathway, it's a potential. Uh, there, we can't set forth, we cannot, it is inconceivable to think that we come up with a zero risk plan. There is no such thing. What we can come up with is a sensible plan that's compliant, number one. Number two, works with what ultimately we hope continues to be the vision for the township. Uh, and then provide some measures of reasonableist control, however you want to describe it, as to hopefully what can be discerned, uh, by a, uh, a zoning board or planning board, shouldn't application come before them. And, and I think that, so doing the larger surface area, shorter buildings ultimately, I think affords us that ability. I'm not an attorney. Um, so having said that, I think that just from a logic standpoint and based on what I kind of read in terms of a little bit of case law, that to me seems to be a, a, a robust defensible strategy for implementing the affordable housing obligation. And, and not for nothing, I think, you, you know, as a developer, I've seen these types of projects, uh, come to fruition and they are, uh, I think find them to be desirable. They're, they're sort of bustling with reasonable activity. Uh, I know there's always ongoing concerns about congestion, circulation, so on and so forth. But I, I think having the, you know, 10 units per acre as, as a defined parameter in the plan, that affords us again, some measures to, uh, uh, help advance the design that would control some of the circulation, some of the traffic, uh, so on and so forth. So, uh, again, you know, larger surface area, shorter buildings, I think ultimately, um, it gives us a, a, a better product, potential product. Again, this is, this is just laying the pathway for, for, for the obligation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's comments, uh, tonight and both from the, the board and from the public. As I said, this is a, this is a board that does take the time to, to try to, you know, educate the public and also to, uh, think thoroughly through in long-term. Dot, I, uh, did not forget about you. Do you have any, uh, parting, uh, last thoughts before we, we move to a reservation?
Yeah, I do. Uh, one thing I didn't hear anybody say was that how convenient it will be for the people who move into that affordable housing. It, it's an ideal spot for affordable housing. It's near the, what's going to be the bus shuttle, shuttle. It's near services they need. So that's part of it. But the other thing is during, during all the discussion tonight, the ability to change the plan was brought up. Now, what I heard was that it would be hard to change the plan. So what? Everything's hard. If we develop a compelling reason why the plan has to be changed and circumstances could arise where we, everybody feels that it's absolutely essential to change the plan, we'll change the plan. Come on, we're tough. We could do that. So those are, those are my comments.
Do you feel there's anything that's compelling you to want to change the plan this evening? Maybe I'm out to direct a question here to the board.
I, I think under the circumstances, this is a remarkably good plan. Balancing everything together, I don't think you, they could, you guys could have come up with a better plan. I think it's outstanding, especially given the time constraints to develop something. This plan makes sense. Now, I could go into details why it, it, it blends into the area because it does. That's a commercial area. Uh, the height is going to be, uh, uh, similar to what's there already. It's going to just look like a nice suburban service area. Uh, I, I don't think it, I don't see how it could have been done better. I know we all want to take careful account of what Dan is worried about. But you, you have to balance things. And I think, I think this is absolutely excellent. I can't really think of any way it could be improved right now. I think where it can be improved is going forward when the development applications come in. Now that's where we can hold developers accountable from maintaining the character of the area. Because we got zoning. We, they, we're allowed to, we're allowed to zone. That implies we're allowed to uphold zoning. And so we can uphold the zoning. So that's, that's, that's how I feel.
Uh, thank you, Dot. It's an excellent point. And yeah, I, I think everybody's fear here is, and particularly in terms of my fear, in terms of this topic is, is can you, will you be able to uphold your zoning? And, you know, part of my issue is not with. And, you know, part of my issue is not with this plan, it's just with the state in general. The state has taken no interest once again in this. There have been numerous, numerous bills offered in Trenton around affordable housing. All of them have died in committee. And some of the most egregious are really, uh, I think too, are around our, uh, around our, um, volunteers and and carving out a segment of the housing, uh, if need be, for for volunteers and veterans that they have totally disregarded. And, you know, and that's my God, doesn't get any better than the people who are manning your volunteer fire departments and and other volunteer organizations to to, you know, serve them if possible, but that's not what this is all about. And so, so a lot of my issues are, I share Nick's, uh, I do, and you know, um, but having lived it and seen it, I'm sorry, I'm laughing out of just like, you know, I I I hear you. And and I think that resonates with with a lot of people, but, uh, it's really the state once again has has abdicated, and here we are. We're being forced to act. The governor forced this upon us very quickly for for, again, good reason to for him to to drive this through. Um, but it doesn't give the towns really, I think, the necessary public opportunity to to be involved and nor for us to maybe vet it some more. You know, again, the plan is is, we have to have something. I get it. But, uh, but it's disappointing that here we are still ten years later from the last round, still fighting for some of the same things that we were trying to fight for ten years ago, and nothing's been done really in in that term. And and once again, all these towns are just up against it, and it's, uh, it's unfortunate. And I don't think there is, there is, when you think about elements of state master plans, they're just, you know. I wonder if a master plan even matters anymore, because affordable housing seems to trump all of it. You know, there's something in our in our documents here, uh, Kendra, that you did, fifteen degrees steep slopes, uh, can't be built upon in affordable housing. Well, that would take out a lot of the town. Um, it would certainly take out river road, so we might not even ever have to worry about turning that into an environmental sensitive area because of steep slopes alone. But we all know that if John Rushdie was here, he'd say, well, you can engineer anything. And you you know, so so it's all kind of this yes, but yes, but so to Dot's point, I hope we can control our zoning in the future. I hope we can limit it. You know, and we'll see. It's all comes down to how courts rule on these things. And 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 one of the issues too is like, like I said, this is, we're going to the minimum here. This is twenty five percent. But there's still seventy five percent out there. So we're talking about a hundred and seventy units, but, um, we're trying to solve for thirty five, hundred and seventy units, right? But a hundred and forty one, it could be, you know, nine hundred units, right? So so we're just going to the minimum, and we're arguing about the minimum. So my my concern is somehow ten years down the road, we're at the maximum, and we're all looking at each other like, what happened? So, um, but we have to vote, so we shall vote.
Would you entertain at this point a motion to adopt the Housing Element Fair Share Plan as presented?
I I would entertain a motion. I will just, uh, reserve any final thoughts, otherwise I will.
And that's reflected in Resolution PB twenty five twelve that's in front of you.
Yes.
One, one quick comment before we get to second. I agree with everything that's been said. I truly do. I am disillusioned with the process that's been forced upon us. And I do understand our obligation to uh, not have the builder's remedy go into effect. But I will say that, you know, as far as support, I I feel that I'm obligated to look out for the for for the quality of life in, uh, the Green Village section of Chatham Township. And for that reason, and that reason only, uh, you know, I I can't find myself being very supportive. But I do appreciate all the work that went into this, and it's no slight on any of that, and I, believe me, I get it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. So we have a motion on the floor for the adoption of Resolution Township Planning Board um, for the fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, Resolution Number PV twenty five dash twelve. Do you need to comment on this before we, well, let me see if there's a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. You need to comment at all?
No, so the motion was who?
Uh, the motion was.
And the second was Matt.
Okay.
I'm assuming this is a simple majority?
Yes, roll call, unless there's further discussion.
No, I think we're done with discussion, but it's a roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
You know, I struggle with affordable housing across the board, as I just said. Um, I do think this is a good plan. I share some of Nick's concerns. I share some of, uh, Dan's. You know, uh, I don't, I don't, you know, if you had to come up with a plan, this is a good plan on on principle. Um, I I just, I'm a no.
Mr. Khan?
I agree with, uh, board member, uh, Sillinger's comments, uh, wholeheartedly, and I, uh, vote yes.
Uh, Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Shahidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewald?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolopoulos?
No.
Mrs. Sillinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheng? And Mr. Miller?
No.
Vote being one, two, three, four, five, six to three, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, and I, yes, please.
Not to take much more time, but I do have to thank Underlily, our planner.
Yes.
On this, um, and Jessica as well, our affordable housing attorney, the two of them.
Thank you.
Really.
Thank you. Good job.
Yep, it was excellent. I would concur with that. Very thorough. Um, do we have, uh, next meeting, Cali, next meeting? Do we have, uh, anything right now?
My seven.
My seven. Very good. For now, we're still on. Um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.